Good afternoon, everyone. We will now call the meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for being here, for your willingness to engage. And with that, we will start with items 1A called Order, and then 1B, Adoption of the Agenda. Okay, moved by Ms. McKinney, seconded by Ms. Bailey.
Yeah, I don't, you know, but I've said.
So we have some members who are having online. So Ms. Robertson, you want to voice it? Is there anybody that you're missing, Ms. Bowles? That's everyone? Okay. And the motion carries. So we will now move on to items 2A, the Acting Superintendent Report. With that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Huggins.
Thank you, Ms. Watley. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, trustees. Today, we are going to take a look at several different things around student support services and some questions that you've asked about student well-being. So I'm going to ask Maggie, as she can, to pull up our slides. And we can go on to slide four now. We go back just one, Maggie. I'm sorry. I think I meant three. We're really going to talk a lot today about school climate. And members of Ms. Simmons' team are here to talk about restorative relationships and wraparound services that we feel are essential to build the whole child and to build community so that students can learn and achieve at higher levels. You'll see on this quote here by Linda Darling-Hammon, "A positive school climate where students feel a sense of safety and belonging and where relational trust prevails improves achievement, test scores, grades, engagement, and reduces the negative effects of poverty on academic achievement." For the last couple of years, we've been looking at system-wide how to build restorative relationships with children. And so what we've put together on the next slide, Maggie, is a video today to highlight our spot or to spotlight our work around restorative practices in schools. So we'll play that now, Maggie. Thank you.
One word to describe positive relationships is connection.
Confronting.
Heartfelt.
Good.
Hopeful.
Empowering.
Safe.
Happy.
Fulfillment.
Friends.
Trust.
CCSD believes that restorative practices are important, which is why the implementation of restorative practices has been identified as one of our three priority strategies for the 2023-2024 school year. Restorative practices, otherwise known as RP, is a field within the social sciences that studies how to strengthen relationships between individuals as well as social connections within communities. Restorative practices are a powerful resource thoughtfully designed to help our schools and classroom leaders create positive learning environments to empower stakeholders. The aim of restorative practices is to develop community and to manage conflict and tensions through a balance of consequences and conversations to repair harm and restore relationships. In today's board report, you'll learn more about the steps to implementation of restorative practices, the status of RP in our district, and positive data that we are excited to share. In this spotlight video, you'll hear directly from students, teachers, and school leaders, as well as community members about the implementation of restorative practices.
Students have to feel comfortable with their teacher. They have to feel loved. They have to feel supported.
I truly believe that a classroom starts with connections with your students and those positive relationships. And that way, you can sometimes go beyond academics and have kids reach their full potential.
Honestly, from a neurological standpoint and from a brain-based standpoint, it makes it easier for children to learn, and it also makes it easier for teachers to teach.
It makes the students feel more comfortable coming to school every day, knowing that you have adults that actually care.
It gives us a chance to communicate on a different level with our students, but also with the other adults that we have in the building.
When our young people are surrounded by positive relationships in schools, they're liberated. They ask questions. They're not afraid to take risks and to ask questions and to go deeper and to think deeper.
We need to problem-solve and teach our youngest learners how to problem-solve using safe, appropriate strategies so they can use those skills as they grow through life.
We use restorative circles, and it helps give them a voice. And you get to, you find, you get the, you get to the root of the situation when you sit the student down and you figure out, you find out the why.
Having restorative practices here at Lucy Beckham has made our school better because it gives us a chance as educators to do what we do. Instead of just looking at things from a discipline lens of consequences, we build in the component of repair and learning.
It is wonderful to see children interacting with each other. I feel like it has changed my classroom culture completely. My students feel like their voice matters. They feel like their voice is heard. They feel comfortable talking to each other about even difficult situations.
One restorative practice that is something I use on a regular basis is called Talking Circles. And it's when, basically, I come up with a prompt, and I have each student in the circle take turns sharing their response to that prompt. You can use this strategy for informal things, like what's your favorite food? But you can also do it as a formative assessment tool. So it has an academic purpose, but it also has a rapport purpose because it lays the foundation for those positive relationships and students feeling heard.
Each year, we give a Panorama survey, which is a research-based student perception survey where our data has improved in the teacher-student relationships. And that's really important because our students spend majority of their day with their teachers. And we want that positive relationship to grow so they can feel comfortable and safe and ready to learn.
We've actually had a couple data points improve by implementing restorative practices. Our Panorama data survey has increased over the past year. But also, because we are a school that focuses on restorative practices, we were able to get an excellent rating on a report card, only having been open for four years.
When I think of RP in schools, I think about community. It empowers our young people to own community, to shape community, and to advocate for themselves in community. And that's a good thing.
And it's a great experience when I have people who love me at my school and support me through tough times.
Because having positive relationships leads to a better school.
When you're having a bad day, restorative conversations help.
I have nice friends, and they help me all times when I say I need help with something.
We hope you enjoyed that spotlight on restorative practices. I really want to thank Ms. Simmons, members of her team. If they're going to be embarrassed, I know, but Lisa Allison, Kanika Manago. Please, please stand. Kanika, I see you, girlfriend. Kanika and those who work alongside her, along with Lisa, have really spearheaded this effort. And over the last two years, we've made a conscious effort, started with Don Kennedy, to really look at where schools are in regards to restorative practices and try to move them from one level to the next. And our time with you today, as we focus on student outcomes, is going to be largely about that work. Lisa and Michelle, Kanika, and members of their team are going to talk more about how they've moved schools from one realm to the other. And they're going to look at some school-specific data to show you how student outcomes have improved. Right now, very quickly, before I turn it over to Ms. Simmons and members of her team, I want to take a look at school climate data. And although we wouldn't attribute everything around school climate data to restorative practices, of course, we do believe that the ability to build productive relationships with students and repair when harm is done is a key factor in improving student outcomes. Because as you'll see here, research shows a significant relationship between stakeholder perception and positive school outcomes. I want to also ask, we have great partners in this work. And a key group who meets with us monthly and who has partnered with us in the community to really propel this work forward is the Charleston Area Justice Ministry. I think I saw. I think like, you saw Dr. Brian Henderson on the video. I'm not sure. I think I saw Ms. McFarland. Oh, Dr. Henderson, please, if you, if you're a member of that great group, Dr. McFarland, I know I saw you earlier. If you'd please rise and be, be recognized. I don't know if Jared's here, but Jared, I see you at that. We started over the last two years, meeting monthly with members of, we call them Cajum, and they still respond. But we, we meet monthly with members of the Charleston Area Justice Ministry. And I know Dr. Henderson and Jared are now co-leading, I believe, Jared, the education work. And we want to thank Dr. McFarland for her service. She's now serving in a different role. And I'm not sure, Dr. McFarland, exactly what your role is. Will you stand and tell us what your new role is? So again, we, we don't do anything in this realm without great partners. And Cajum is, is one of the many partners we have in this work. And Lisa's going to highlight that and some other things when she comes forward in just a bit to talk more about student outcomes and how we believe they've improved. When we take a look at student climate data, we're going to look at the climate data that is accrued. Maggie, I'm sorry, we go back one. I think I said go forward. My apologies. We're going to take a look at the South Carolina School Climate Survey. And if you see here, this is required. Beginning in 2122 was the first year that these surveys were used as part of our schools' South Carolina School Report Card ratings. Eighty percent minimum participation is required. And that's, that's hard for some principals, as, as many of you know, given some of the challenges we face about getting data from families. You'll see that 10% of the school climate in the elementary and middle is based on student and teacher surveys and 5% at the high school. Again, we're going to take a quick look now, Maggie, at some school climate results. Overall, from '22 to '23, as we began to focus more on relationship building, and again, remember that I'm not saying restorative practices are the only factor that have contributed to some of this growth. But you'll see here a rise in teacher perception of those satisfied with the social and physical environment at their schools. You'll see also among parents, that has begun to rise as we've worked more closely with students and their families, building back some of those relationships that we often find are damaged. You'll see, though, as Ms. Simmons and Lisa will talk in just a bit, that with the students' perception of their social and physical environment, that they need to remain center and paramount in our work. And that's why our associates, Dr. Swearengen, Dr. Williams, Dr. Appleshimer, and Ms. Haynes are working this year with this key strategy to ensure that their principals are focused on those relationships with students. Maggie, what students think? There are key questions on these surveys, again administered through the State Department of Education, for each target stakeholder group. So when students are asked, do we get along well with each other at our school? When teachers are asked, do we get along well with each other at our school? You'll see among elementary and middle school students, that, that number is on the rise. A little bit of a drop with our high school students, again, really wanting to focus on what we need to work on this year. And you'll see in some of this data, it is among our students, Maggie. Students, I feel safe at school. Mr. Ryan Bach, you'll see here that overwhelmingly, among the indicators, that our students are reporting an increased feeling of safety and security, both in our elementary, middle, and high schools. Maggie? Percent reporting a positive satisfaction with their learning environment. We believe this is key, again, to student outcomes increase across the board. Reading, math, you'll, science, and social studies. Dr. Williams is going to share in a bit, along with Mrs. Simmons and Buffy Roberts. Data related to middle school English and middle school math. And so what's important, based on data and what we know among researchers, is that for students to achieve, they have to feel satisfied with the learning environment. They have to feel safe. They have to feel welcome. And you'll see here, again, that our parents are feeling significantly better. Our teachers are feeling better. And although we've seen a slight increase with students, that our focus still has to be among our learners. Maggie? Students at my school believe they can do good work. Again, a lot of our work this past year has been around metacognitively, helping not only students believe they can do good work, but helping make, make sure that our educators believe that all of our students can do good work, which speaks to the equity that we believe we need across our system. At our elementary and middle school, you'll see increased numbers of our students reporting that they believe in themselves and they can do good work. I want to really applaud Lisa Allison again, Tasha Joyner behind me, Kanika Manago, and the work that they're doing, helping students believe more in, believe more in themselves. High schoolers, you'll see as well, reporting increased favorability in believing that they can. Maggie? My classes are challenging. Again, more of an increase here among elementary and middle schoolers than among our high schoolers. We want to really challenge our students. There's a lot of talk in PLCs this year around rigor and what we need to do to make sure all of our learners are achieving at very high levels. So we want to see this increase as well. And then, as we pull out a couple of celebrations, we had several principals who were planning to be here, but sickness has plagued a good many of them. I see Mrs. Dasing is here to talk in just a bit. But we pulled out a few schools among your communities where we saw some significant increases between school climate from '22 to '23. Mini Hughes was one in the student perception of their, their physical environment, as well as safety. Carolina Park out in Mount Pleasant, again, increased its student perception of safety and teacher perception of safety. Mr. Drayton had planned to be here from Baptist Hill, but had a, a community emergency and is tending to those needs there. But you'll see a significant increase there with teachers' perception of safety. Also, Dr. Gathers at Huntley Park and out at Mount Zion. And Amemce has done a lot of good work around that. Last slide, Maggie. And here, if you just want to take a quick look, I won't read things to you. Jamie McCarthy had planned to be here at Lamb's to talk really about what's key here is teacher perception of instructional focus and how much time we contribute to focusing on student outcomes in PLCs. A teacher perception of working conditions, again, you'll see some increases there in some of our schools across the board. So the spotlight today was really intended to set up the work on the Strategic Education Committee that Ms. Simmons and her team have done around relationship building, student climate, and those wraparound services that you've asked consistently about. As we've talked a little bit about the Sunset of Esther funds, because so many of our funds have been dedicated to those wraparound and well-being services of students. So that's all I have before I turn it over to Ms. Simmons. Do you have any questions that I might be able to answer about building restorative relationships? And I might have to lean on some of the experts here to answer them, or about school climate and what we're doing to improve those efforts?
So Ms. Huggins, Ms. Huggins, do you want me to open it up for discussion at this time? Or do you want me to wait on this sentence?
Whatever you all see fit to do. It might give you a more thorough, comprehensive look if we wait on Mrs. Simmons and Mrs. Allison to present the work on, on building relationships and wraparound services, for sure. Unless there's just something compelling that.
I'm okay with, with hearing the whole thing.
Okay, well, I'll turn it over to Ms. Simmons. Thank you.
This, this work really resides with Lisa Allison and Kanika Manago, who are prepared today to give us a high-level overview, representing the Office of Student Support Services. Ms. Allison?
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Thank you, Board of Trustees. Thank you, Ms. Huggins, for the opportunity. And so we are here to share some updates about the services designed and dedicated to supporting our students, their families, and our school staff. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge members of our department who are here in the room. Best team in CCSD right here. Of course, you've seen Ms. Kanika Manago. We have an amazing team, and I feel honored to be able to serve alongside of them. I'd also like to acknowledge that this week is National School Psychology Week. So I just want to give a shout out to our school psychologists in the audience. Psychologists, myself. I'm partial to that. So we can go to the next slide. While our department does much to support our school communities today, as Ms. Huggins said, we will focus specifically on the district priority for relationship-centered learning and our pillar three of wraparound services. So you have heard multi-tiered system of supports as a high-level strategy for operationalizing resources. Our team works across all three tiers to provide wraparound support services so that students can engage in grade-level instruction and college and career readiness. So what are wraparound supports? They are services that encompass the whole child within their ecosystem, that ecosystem of their classroom, the ecosystem of their family unit, the ecosystem of their community. They can include identification for specialized services. They can include family supports, access to community resources. We know that the pandemic had a significant impact on our students' mental health and wellness, as well as our adults, frankly. So it has been a blessing to have resources that have been dedicated to stabilizing schools so that they can provide high-quality education for our students in a safe and supportive learning environment. Our work is largely directed on getting students to school, helping work through barriers that might be in the way for getting kids to school, keeping them in school, and having them highly engaged while they're at school so that they can have positive academic outcomes. So the next slide shows some images that reflect the work within our department. Some of these images reflect people and some reflect strategies. Our people include climate coaches, school counselors, social workers, school psychologists, clinical counselors, mental health and wellness coaches, behavior specialists, staff dedicated to Project Prevent, Homebound, and Substance Use. All of the members of our department support school climate. They support MTSS, PBIS, attendance, behavior, college and career readiness, and relationship-centered learning. So if a teacher needs assistance within the classroom regarding a specific student and maybe regarding behavior or just the classroom environment, our team will help support that. If the district has a crisis, such as a student death or a staff death, we are the first responders. If there is a need for a threat assessment, such as threat to others or threat to self, we work with Mr. Ryan Bach's team to help support those assessments and make sure everyone is safe. Ms. Holt Pilkey talked last week about the Department of Exceptional Children and all of those services. It's our group who conducts problem-solving on the front end, intervention, assessments for eligibility for services, and also works with our preschool and community child find, including Head Start. So there's a high level of expertise in licensure within our group, as well as a diverse representation to mirror our school communities. And so when we go to the next slide, it's just a highlight of the priority strategy for restorative practices and relationship-centered learning that Ms. Huggins outlined earlier. You were able to get a snapshot of what that looks like, sounds like, and feels like through the video. And again, yes, people need to feel physically and psychologically safe to do their best work. Adults need to feel that way to keep coming to work. Families need to feel that their students will experience that so they trust schools to send their students to school. And students need to feel physically and psychologically safe to do their best work and meet the high expectations that are being set for them by our adults. So we can go to the next slide. You can see that we have a three-year implementation plan. And thank you again to the Charleston Area Justice Ministry for your partnership and advocacy, collaboration, and just fun time spent together monthly. So thank you to them. We do have six stages of our implementation plan. And our commitment is to have schools move up at least one phase in the implementation process. And I just want to thank our associate superintendents of our learning communities for helping to support that implementation plan with our, and support our principals in those plans. We do have urgency to create and cultivate positive relationships within schools. But we also want to make sure that that work is done with our school teams so that they can help design what it will look like for their schools. There's a high level of expectation and a high level of support. And that is the foundation of restorative practices. You can go to the next slide, and you can see a current representation of all of our stages, from initial consideration all the way through to school of distinction. We do have a demonstration school. That is Lamb's Elementary. That's the highest so far in our district. You saw Ms. McCarthy featured in that video. We also have numbers here to represent our listening circles, community circles, and conferences, as well as an update on the number of staff trained. So after the first quarter, we have two-thirds of our schools in what we would call an active implementation phase. And we have trained over 130 staff to date. We are seeing an impact on student performance. We just saw some impact on, on school climate, but also on student performance here. This is one slide to reflect that. This slide represents the percentage of students with zero behavior referrals in schools implementing restorative practice. So in this case, more is better. So the higher, the higher the bar, the better. You will notice the anomaly of COVID when we had a high number of zero referrals at school, but I would imagine a fair number at home. I'm a parent as well. When we look across our timeline from 1718 to 202223, in our schools implementing restorative practices, we see an 11% increase in the number of students with zero referrals. And just with the, from the last year to this, I'm sorry, from the year before to last year, was the largest increase of 5%, and that exceeded the district average of 2%. So we're seeing more growth in our schools implementing these practices. In the next two slides, instead of inundating you with graphs, we wanted to provide a high-level summary of climate indicators that are changing in our restorative practices schools. So these data are from our climate survey, and the areas that we are monitoring is part of goal two. So we have sense of belonging and self-management. We've had previous discussions at board meetings around sense of belonging, specifically in our secondary schools, as low in comparison to the rest of the nation. And that has been a focal area for our secondary principals. And restorative practices is one strategy that's been helpful in increasing sense of belonging in our students, critical. So when we look at our sense of belonging for students in restorative practices schools, we see growth above the district average and half of the grade levels assessed in the spring of '23. And we see that same pattern in the area of self-management. And we see that same pattern in the area of self-management. This year, we're really excited to start with check-ins with Panorama so we thought we can progress monitor our students along the way. That helps us understand where our school is, where our students are. And as we think about that state climate survey of items that are factored into our school report card, it's important for a lot of reasons. So having that timely data can be so critical for school teams to make improvements if needed. So some of the questions on the check-ins are, what is one thing you can do better as a student? And what can teachers or other adults at school do to better help you? So you're seeing that accountability and that also that support, which that balance is so important. On the next slide, you can see that we're having some exciting changes in our teacher survey as well. This spring, we saw more favorable responses by teachers in restorative practices schools than the district average in the areas of well-being, belonging, and overall school climate. So we're going to make a shift to wraparound support services. We can't cover them all, but on this slide, we want to make sure we leave you with a few statistics that set the context for our urgency around our work. Like, one in six youth aged six to seventeen experiencing mental health disorder and suicide as the second-leaning cause of death among people aged ten to fourteen, with higher numbers in marginalized communities. We appreciate that our state has realized this challenge across the region and that the efforts have been similarly supported by this Board of Trustees. So thank you. In addition to the ESTR funds that are dedicated to wraparound services, we've taken advantage of the model for increased billing opportunities that Governor McMaster provided for districts for school-based services. So by leveraging all of the available avenues, we have has led to increased access for services for students and families. We've highlighted some high-leveraged strategies here for our wraparound services. You'll notice that there are balance of additional internal resources, additional access to external resources or community-based organizations, plans to use those resources effectively and efficiently, and then ways to grow our capacity and skills through professional development and certifications, as well as additional tools and strategies for teachers to use day to day. So when we go to the next slide, we can see some of those additional tools and resources have including calming kits and calming rooms. Calming kits include sensory items like stress relievers, which I probably should have brought here tonight. That would have been helpful. But things you might squeeze to relieve stress. Calming rooms are meant to be designated as quiet, peaceful places with mindfulness activities to help with reflection and self-regulation. These have been extremely well-received in our schools. And so if you all are out visiting schools, we invite you to visit one of these rooms and have a moment or two of calm for yourself. We'll go to the next slide. In this work, it's the work of people, and the people matter. This is not work that can be done by a program or a book. This slide depicts our staffing model. These services rest in a framework of MTSS. We use our data to allocate our resources to schools in response to need. Some of our staff work through all three tiers, and some have specialized skills for intensive support. If you go to the next slide, you can see an example of a service that runs through all three tiers. And this is our substance use program, ORADAPT. And when you look at that graph, you can see that we have a sharp increase in referrals since COVID. In response, we have increased our prevention and intervention efforts across three levels of services. And those include internal supports across our team and with partners like Charleston Center, MUSC, and Wake Up Carolina. Additional community partnerships are reflected here. So some of these partnerships require money and some do not. These are, they represent partnerships specifically designed for mental health and wellness supports. Those on the left are partnerships that have benefited from ESTR funds to expand service options, like coverage for students who are not Medicaid-eligible. Those on the right represent partnerships through collaboration and coordination. These organizations on the right often depend on funding through other opportunities like grants or billing or donations. And then on the next slide, we thought it would be nice to reflect the number of students impacted by these most intensive services. So these are actual students served, receiving the most intensive services or that tier three or that very top of the triangle. The next slide is a graph to represent the number of students served, again, by our most intensive mental health support. You can see the steady incline. We also want to recognize here with you all that this is an underestimate of students served. We recognize that we need a better way to track our supports for students, specifically with our school psychologists and school counselors, who so often in their day-to-day can be involved in in working with any number of students. So we can collect data on the number of evaluations that they do, the number of threat assessments, IGP's, things like that. But we have not tracked other supports well, and we have a plan for that moving forward. What we are hearing from principals is that being able to embed full-time student support staff at our largest and neatest schools is making a significant impact, especially at our secondary schools and our Title I schools. So this is our last slide, and we'll leave you with next steps focused on sustainability and capacity building. For example, our pathways for certification has allowed more adults within our system to have additional levels of expertise to better serve our students. And we want to tie, turn the dial up on the urgency of hearing from our students. Ms. Huggins mentioned that early. You heard the students in the video. It's one thing to assume what students need, and it's another thing for them to tell you what they need. And they will tell you if you ask them. Lastly, we are so thankful to have wonderful apartment, wonderful partnerships with those in our Learning Services Division and across other divisions as well so that we make sure we're aligned to our district goals and our student outcomes. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Ms. Simmons. Ms. Simmons, did you have anything else?
No, at this time, we'll open the floor. I'll allow you to open the floor for questions.
Very good. I'm going to start our discussion with our members who are joining us online because I've zoomed in once before, and it's very difficult to be heard. So Dr. Temple, would you like to start us off with the discussion?
Yes. Hello, everyone. I'm here in Virginia, working with our accelerated schools, and I'm very inspired by the work that we're doing today. And I want to say that one of the things I asked, have been asking about our accelerated schools is how is restorative practice is going? Because I know it is a really good practice, and it definitely improves school climate and school achievement. And I'm hearing very positive responses on that. I do have a question, and that relates to the substance abuse slide that that you all had. And I'm just wondering, what, let me come up here so you can see me. So I'm just wondering, what what is being done to help our students with vaping, understanding the issues around vaping and helping them get off vaping and monitoring of vaping at the schools? I I just understand that that's that that is a big problem.
Yes, ma'am. It's actually the highest referral that we have. And those of us who support constituent board meetings know that it is is highly prevalent. So it begins with education. We do have Linda Ballinger in the in the room. She is our coordinator for the ADAPT program. But starting early around education, as early as elementary school, actually, and partnering with Holly Cut and our health standards around healthy choices, and then also early interventions. So instead of disciplining or consequences around the behavior, which are necessary and needed sometimes, but also the education and making sure families are included in that education. So increasing our opportunities for family engagement options.
Thank you.
Dr. Temple, was that everything?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, I am at work, and I will be there when I get off. So I have two questions for Ms. Allison and there's one from Ms. Huggins. The first one will be approximately how much ESTR funding was allocated towards wraparound services? And how much would you need to be to be able to sustain our increase in any of your strategies?
So the majority of funding is in our staffing. We currently have thirty-seven positions that are funded by ESTR. And that includes school psychologists, social workers, mental health and wellness coaches, and clinical counselor. And then additional funds upwards of millions have been dedicated to our partnerships and our contracts with those that you saw on that slide. And I'll defer to Ms. Huggins and Ms. Simmons for further information.
So we do have a sizable investment in wraparound services connected, attached to ESTR funding. And so this will be one of the big areas that we have to deliberate on and determine moving forward for whatever part of money we have set aside for sustainability, which of these projects, because every week you will hear amazing work happening, attached and connected to ESTR. And the onus is on us to determine moving forward, long-term, what can be sustained, at what level we can sustain it, and for how long. And so that's just the the truth of where we where we rest with ESTR funding being short-term and sunsetting in probably ten months or so. Would love to maintain everything. But that's not realistic, not speaking specifically to wraparound services, but all the continuum of supports that we have attached to ESTR will have to be looked at. A small group working with Mr. Kennedy and finance are taking a hard look at this as we speak. We're responsive to human resources as we try to capture every single individual who is being funded by ESTR. It's a big undertaking, and we're starting the process right now.
Thank you. And going back to you, Ms. Allison, for one, when we talk about the increase in the percentage of students with no referrals, how many of those students would have, do you believe, would have had a referral if this was not, if restorative practices would not have been in place?
That's a great question. I'm not sure I can answer that question, but it is something that we can try, our team can look at tracking. Thank you for that. Yeah.
I would like to see that also because then we then we can track it back to, you know, how the sustainability methods have, how we need to put the funding behind the sustainability. And this is where our students would have been if it was not for for this. And then lastly, or I think this will be from Ms. Huggins. When we looked at the the teacher perceptions, percentages of when most of the schools that were on there that had significant increases would have been Hunley and Lamb's. How do you think merger of campuses would affect the teacher, teacher perception numbers?
You know, Mr. Callen, that's a great question. I'm I'm not really sure. Ms. McCarthy had planned to be here today but was ill. But I certainly can talk to her and Dr. Gathers about that. I think it's a point of conversation, Mr. Barrow. Thank you for that. Mr. Calhoun, your questions are so spot on. I don't know if Ms. Carlin or Mr. Kennedy knows right off the total amount allocated for ESTR in regards to wraparound. Ms. Ms. Carlin? Mr. Calhoun, if we if we, yeah, Mr. Kennedy?
I don't know the total amount, but the winter, spring of last year, twenty-two, there was an increase of fourteen million dollars for support students primarily around mental health and social work that's outside ESTR funding. So that was in addition to whatever amount we already had.
Thank you for that, Mr. Kennedy. I don't know whether you were able to hear that, Mr. Calhoun. Mr. Kennedy didn't have a microphone back there, but he indicated that last winter, early spring, we poured in an additional fourteen million to what we'd already allocated. Mrs. Carlin is going to try to get that number, and we will provide it to you, if not by the end of the meeting today, certainly in the board brief this week.
All right. And now it's fourteen million on top of what we already have allocated in the GFO.
Yes, sir. Thank you for those questions.
Mr. Calhoun, are you finished?
Yes.
That's everything? Okay. Then I'll start over here with Ms. Waters.
I do have a few questions. One is a more of an ask. I know this wasn't, the focus wasn't the Panorama survey, but just in general, whenever we do get data back for Panorama, it would be nice to see it at a school-by-school level, just for better understanding. And then I did have a, I have a couple of questions, but the is about restorative practices and the implementation. That cut this off? There we go. I know that the practice has generally been to allow schools to adopt in. But we have some districts, four and ten, that have very high referral, referrals coming out of those districts. And so what is the strategy around ensuring those principals are opting into restorative practices?
I'm so glad you asked, Ms. Waters, because, as you know, where no strategy exists, there's really not a change in behavior. And so this year, we, our associate superintendents are working with each principal in our district to move each school from one level where they are to the next. And that level starts at at zero, as you saw on that chart. So again, an important part of restorative practices, I know the members behind me and Ms. Allison will say, because she keeps reminding, reminding me that an important part of that is all folks buying into the process, feeling good about the process and moving forward together. But we also acknowledge that we have to have an expectation that we do make steady progress. And so I'm proud to say that this year, we're working with each school, our associates are, to move from one level to the next, whether you're down here at level zero and you're just getting started, or whether you're close to doing a whole school.
So is the expectation that at some point, all schools will be doing, using restorative practices?
Yes, ma'am.
And just a, thank you for that. And in the interim, is there some requirement that schools are able to produce what they are doing about these, about these behaviors?
Ms. Allison?
Sure. And I will say that this is nested in our school climate approaches overall. And so thinking about that MTSS student data, PBIS, our curriculum to help support life skills, consistent with college and career readiness. And then whether or not a whole school is ready does not prohibit a teacher, an individual, from going to receiving training. And so we have seen that be really powerful from when one or two people will go to a training and then come back to their school and fuse those practices informally until a whole school has adopted more formally as an entity.
Awesome. Thank you. And then my last question is actually about, as we look into sunsetting ESTR funds, it would be nice to see a comparison of prior state, current state, and future state for mental health services. And I'd really like to get an understanding of where those resources are going to be pulled from and if we're really considering where they need to remain, whether they, those schools had support before or not, just that moving forward, they're going to the spaces where they're most needed.
Thank you for that suggestion. That's excellent, Mrs. Waters. Appreciate that. And Mrs. Waters, if I may, your questions are are spot on. I I do want to acknowledge Dr. Shavana Cogly here because her work is key. Your one question about what do we do with schools that aren't quite there yet, that you you asked a little more eloquently than I paraphrased. But Dr. Cogly works hand in hand with with Lisa Allison and her team, Megan Bocino, Tasha, Kanika behind me, to ensure that from the the student support side, with with the discipline and the constituent boards, that she's merging and helping onboard and help bring in the restorative practices from the discipline side, too. Because this doesn't necessarily mean students aren't disciplined for their behavior, but we acknowledge that we have to to work with them to help them understand that education is paramount, and so paramount. And so Dr. Cogly, the the relationship between Dr. Cogly's team and Ms. Allison's team is really critical to that. So thank you for the questions. And this comparison chart is something that we we will take seriously and look at as we think about moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. One, I'm sorry, one last thing. If, um, so I haven't been to restorative practices training yet.
You can come.
Yeah, and I, it always seems to conflict with work schedule. But if I can have sort of a, if the board can receive the calendar for the rest of the year, it'd be great to be able to plan for next semester.
We have that down, Mrs. Waters. Thank you.
I actually think.
I actually think maybe you should bring it to the board. Ms. Bailey?
We certainly could talk about that, Mrs. Watley. I think that I heard you say that.
My question is this. What types of services are schools across the district providing for parents for restorative practices? Because I know a lot of parents in the schools that I've worked with had a hard time dealing with certain situations that their families were going through and they didn't feel safe or didn't know who to speak to about the different circumstances that they have been going through. So do you believe that increase of well-being and a sense of belonging for the parents have increased the rate of them coming forward and asking the the social workers or the school psychologists for the help that they need to get their kids where they need to be?
That's a great question, Ms. Bailey. Ms. Allison, you work with this more and Dr. Cogly too in the work with parents. So maybe Dr. Cogly, you can come up after Ms. Allison and kind of speak to that if you don't mind.
I think it's multi-layered. I think the availability of staff in schools for families is really critical. Representation is really critical in our communities. Part of our implementation plan in restorative practices includes family engagement. So you actually can't move up to some of those later phases without that very explicit family engagement. And so it's part of a whole school climate that establishes families as true partners and not people that we do things to or for, but that community members and family members of our precious cargo that we do things with. I don't know if Dr. Cogly.
I think Dr. Cogly is coming in the side door. But Mrs. Bailey, do you have another question while we wait on, I'm sorry, Ms. Watley? Here comes Dr. Cogly. I know, we thought you were going in that side door there. We lost you. You'd have my seat too.
No, you keep your seat.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. So on the parenting side, when we talk about the the sense of belonging and what you talk about was the trust, that's definitely important. Not only when we get parents who call into our department, it is because they either have had some type of reaction when they were growing up in school, and so they're not sure who to go to and ask for that assistance. It also could be shame and embarrassment for the current situation. So they're looking to see who they can have step in and provide that assistance. We do provide that support through the school support side, but we also look at it for what's needed for the student. So it could be a matter of home services, so we get the social workers involved. It could be a behavioral piece where we need to look at what other wraparound services need to be provided. And for a lot of our families, they already have services in place outside of the school. So it's a matter of connecting with that case manager or the individual who's working with them through the juvenile system or JDC. And you saw some of those programs listed in Ms. Allison's report. So what we find ourselves doing is really having conversations or with Ms. McKino back there, talk about what services are in place for this family. And a family has a multitude of services. It's where do we go now as a district to continue with the support? So that's a really good question because it is that fact finding that we have to put in place for the families.
Okay. And another question is, as we come to the sunsetting of Esser funds, is the district working with those families that are need the intense mental health counseling? Are they working with Medicaid to be able to supplement those, that help that they need?
So families who don't have Medicaid or maybe their Medicaid services have expired, yes, Ms. Allison team. You know, we work with those families to make sure that whatever paperwork needs to be put in place, that we go ahead and apply for the services that are needed. For my department, we have prevention and intervention specialists that are onboard, but those are for families or students who have been assigned to probation after an expulsion hearing has been heard. So really, the work that Ms. Allison's team is doing that's under that Esser umbrella would be important to continue because that service is not in place within my department. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, really good question.
Okay. And one other thing, I just want to tell you, I was in a school where we did restorative practices and just the trust that these little kids have, especially kindergartners and preschoolers, when they feel safe and they know that a teacher or a support staff cares about them and makes the learning environment so much easier and makes them want to come to school and they want to see their friends and they want to learn, especially when our classrooms are so diverse with many different nationalities of children. And and when they know that the people that they come to see every day cares about them, it makes the learning experience is beautiful. And with the calming rooms for the teachers, the teachers need that.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. McKinnney?
I think you've answered all my questions. We've previously corresponded. So thanks to the whole team.
Ms. Robertson?
Let me start by saying thank you, Ms. Allison, for such a detailed report. Thank you, Learning Services, but especially thank you to Cajum. Oftentimes, we have programs, they come and they go. But now we have an organization that we are partnered with that holds us accountable. So thank you for all the work that you put into this. My question, I believe, is probably for Mr. Kennedy. I believe his name has been referenced. My concern is one of sustainability. You've put a lot of time into this. You've put a lot of resources into this. How quick can we get a draft plan of how we plan to sustain this program? I would hate to see that all the work that's been put into this, it's lost. I know Project Prevent is a five-year grant. There's a lot on so many levels that we have to look at. And I believe for me, it's best to look at this sooner rather than later. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you very much, Ms. Robertson, for that question. A couple of points. One, on the restorative practices rolled out across the district for all schools, I think it was mentioned, there's a three-year rollout plan that that commitment was made by the district to Cajum some months ago. And so that plan was developed, it was presented to Cajum, Cajum reviewed the plan, essentially approved the plan. And so as this team mentioned, that plan for the implementation and rollout is underway. So every school is involved, has a component of that plan that lays out how they would progress from wherever they are to where they need to be. And then in terms of the financial component, to your question, the sustainability. So that work is underway. I think Ms. Huggins mentioned that, no, Ms. Simmons did. So we have a small, right now, design team looking at sustainability for the Esser funding, for all of the initiatives, programs that have been put in place and once are effective. That design team met today, the intent is of that team is to bring a much broader group together sometime between now and mid-December so that we can understand exactly where the which programs are effective, which ones we can potentially sustain, and how we would have mitigate mitigation strategies. For example, I briefed the board in the past that we've set aside over the last three years, funding in the fund balance to go towards Esser. In fact, it's called Esser Sustainability in the in the balance sheet to make sure that for those programs that are effective, that we have some funding source to get started for that sustainability. So we will work that through the Argent Finance Committee and then on to the board.
Thank you. Programs as well as staffing, because there's a lot of staff that's in this.
That's great. So we're looking, in fact, the start of that work I mentioned was started with staffing. And then, so yeah, staffing and programming.
Thank you.
Ms. Robertson, your question is is spot on. Tomorrow, Mrs. Simmons and members of her team, John Cobb, Buffy Roberts, should come in to brief the cabinet again on the school impact reports, for example, that cover both programs and staffing. So we are trying to be very strategic about how we look at the results so that we know what's worth maintaining as we, as we, as we move forward. So so thank you for for asking the question.
And just one last thing, Ms. Watley. I did write a note to Ms. Allison about the panorama. And we we know that the school report card, so I think Ms. Waters brought that up. And I think it's important because that is one of the categories on our report card. And when we look at the data, the school, the school climate, a lot of it's low. And so how are we really using the data from the panorama survey to plug into our school report card to see where we make those changes?
Yes, ma'am. That's an excellent point. So we have, through Buffy Roberts' team, we have a crosswalk of the Panorama Climate Survey and our state climate survey and those items that are weighted for our school report cards. So we have that available for principals so that when they look at their fall survey data, they can look at those items that are correlated to that end-of-year climate survey. And they can work with their school teams to process that information and think about how they might want to address some of those issues that they think could use some improvement. Thank you.
Ms. Robertson, we'll provide that crosswalk if it's good with the team in this week's board brief. You all can take a look at it. Think of those connections.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kelly?
Good evening. Thank you all for the so many great questions and wonderful discussion. A couple of just clarity points. You you mentioned that thirty seven of your staff were funded via Esser. I'm trying to wrap my mind around the, how big this problem is. Thirty seven is what percentage? Or how how big is the department in total?
So that's a great idea, a great question. It's about a hundred and eighteen staff, not including our school counselors who are not, they're kind of a dotted line to our department. So we have our director of school counseling and our coordinator for school counseling, but our school counselors are actually hired by principals and serve our schools through that state formula of allocation.
Okay, so their funding, their FTE funding is not coming out of Esser then?
Correct.
All right, okay. Okay, thank you. You you mentioned, Ms. Allison, that there were barriers in the way of students getting to and staying in school. Can you tell me what kind of barriers you guys are working through and some of the strategies you have to solve that?
So that is a multifaceted question. Those barriers can differ by area and by school and by family. But consistent things that we are seeing in the realms of chronic absenteeism, and we partner again with Department of School Support. So the first thing is looking at data to say, what does our school's chronic absenteeism data look like? And chronic absenteeism encompasses truancy. It also encompasses discipline and exclusionary practices. So and it can also include other factors that I'm not the expert in, but she is. I was vamping until she got here. But working collaboratively across, just getting students to school can include a lot of different barriers that families experience. And we're so thankful to have people who recognize and treat those barriers with dignity and try to get to the root issue so that we can address sometimes the very specific challenges that can interfere with a family member getting their student to school. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Cogly.
Yep, thank you. So some of the barriers that we're seeing when we look at students individually and then the subgroups, we have a large population in Charleston County of homeless families. So most of those families have been identified, but then there are families that have not actually reached out for the supports that we can offer. So we find out that information either by reports from individuals within the community or a DSS social worker who has contacted us. And one of the things that we've done this year is actually partnered with the Department of Social Services to make sure they understand what supports are in place for families who are displaced. We are also working with our federal program department within CCSD to provide that training and awareness to our families. So through Ms. Sonia and John Cobb's office, making sure that families understand exactly the opportunities that are out there. We also have our Hispanic families that do a lot of moving in and out of the CCSD area. So making sure they understand what opportunities are available in their areas for families who we have received a list of scholars that have not either reported even today to school, or scholars who have actually removed themselves from the school environment. They receive calls. We reach out to the families to find out exactly what's going on. For some of our Hispanic families, there's more of those families moving back to the area and where they're, they have navigated from. When we talk about families who have a fear of returning their students to school, a lot of that fear is dealing with some community concerns that have happened within their community, fear of the school, that their student would be going to not necessarily the school itself, but the community issues that have impacted some of the concerns. So we work with those families through mediation and talking about what supports we can put in place to make sure that the students feel safe. In some cases, which is very, very rare, we might have to look at special transfers for those students in which we call a hardship transfer. We also work on moving those students to alternative education options outside of CCSD because the family may not be willing to actually return the students to CCSD. So we've created a really healthy list of alternative options for those families.
Mr. Kelly, we, thank you so much, Dr. Cogly. We also have here Tasha Joyner, who I think Ms. Robertson it was, I believe, mentioned. I'm going to ask her, because she does some work with that too, if she doesn't mind giving us a quick overview and and highlight some of the work that she's done as a member of this great team. Ms. Joyce?
Thank you, Ms. Huggins.
She's also the the proud wife of the principal at St.
I am the first, the first lady of St. John's High School.
The first lady. And she'll be signing autographs after this event today. Thank you, Ms. Joyner.
So I am the proud Project Prevent Officer for the Project Prevent Grant. We are in the North Charleston area, so there are seven schools that are involved. We were very strategic and intentional about that selection of schools. And so we have all the way, starting at our Early Learning Center, Mary Ford, all the way up until North Charleston High School. And so it is early learning, elementary, middle, and high. We have three main things that we're focusing on, so we were awarded back in 2019. So it is making sure that our scholars, that we are assessing and determining their mental health needs. Because as you all may or may not know, that those seven schools come from three communities that have the highest crime rate in North Charleston. And so when they are coming into our buildings, and so we're talking about making sure they're in the building to to access these resources, we are, we are seeing things like trauma. We are seeing anger. We are seeing those internalizing behaviors that are then externalized. And so making sure that we're supporting our scholars, but also supporting our staff because those behaviors that they are seeing, we have to provide them with the tools and the strategies in order to meet the needs of the students that are coming into the building so that we can set up an environment for learning. But also making sure that when they go home, that we are equipping our parents with those same tools, but in the home setting. And then we cannot forget about our community because we know that when trauma happens and when crime occurs and any type of crisis, that our communities are impacted beyond what we see on the news. It is, it's lasting. It impacts everyone in that student's ecosystem. And so we have to make sure that we are providing those resources. So we are in the sunset of the grant. We are calling this year our legacy year because if you know anything about a legacy, it is leaving things that can go beyond. And so we are excited that we have been funded, fully funded, for five of, all five years. And in our most recent report, we do have seventeen objectives. We met fourteen of those objectives and actually exceeded a lot of those benchmarks. But what we are very proud of, and Dr. Cogly will love this, is for the first time ever, we saw a decrease and an increase where it was needed in all three of our discipline referrals and those objectives that impact that. So we are looking forward to working collaboratively with, as we say in the District Four Office, the first floor and the second floor, to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to sustain and build that capacity beyond the sunset of Esser, but also beyond the sunset of Project Prevent.
Thank you, Ms. Joyner. Perfect. Thank you. And Ms. Huggins and and you.
On top of what Ms. Joyner just shared out, it's important to know that besides what we see on paper, Ms. Joyner
Ms. Joyner and I, along with several other members, we believe in boots to the ground action when it comes down to what we do for our community. So we've been involved in gun violence rallies within the community where we've hosted and put on within the North Charleston area to make sure that our families know that we understand that the violence is real. But we're here as a district to make sure that we are present with you, marching with you in support. We've also hosted the, the Home Buyers Seminar, where we actually had members present from the various communities to offer jobs, habitable place for families to live. We also talked about educational opportunities that our families could have as outreach. It really was a one stop shop that our families could sign up for a plethora of support that would be ongoing. And I can go on and on and on about the additional items and supports that we provide. But that is in essence to make sure that our families understand that while we provide supports within the school, there's also that wraparound service that Ms. Allison has talked about with the pillar. Where we talk about how do we help the whole child and the whole family?
Thank you, Dr. Cogly.
Thank you for that explanation. That's very helpful in understanding the totality of what we're up against. Perhaps Ms. Joyner answered it, but, but I didn't hear an explicit answer to it. Ms. Huggins, you mentioned it, and then I didn't catch who it was, but someone in the video also mentioned repairing harm was the phrase you used. Is that, is that harm as what Ms. Joyner was talking about where it's students bringing it in? Or is there between the district and families?
I'm so glad you asked, Mr. Kelly.
I'd like to call order. We'd like to keep order. Thank you.
So I, I'm going to ask, Kanika, Ms. Manago, are you, are you good coming to answer that? You saw Kanika featured in the, in the video, and she and Ms. Allison have really led this effort district wide. And so I'm going to let you turn it over to you.
So good afternoon. When we talk about repairing harm, it could be, it's multi-faceted, multi-layered. So it could be within the community. It could be within the schools. It could be teacher to teacher, student to student, student, teacher. Anyone in with restorative practices can benefit from learning how to repair harm. So we sit down and give them the tools to be able to do that. We heard earlier talking about wanting to do it with. So that's one of the criteria. They have to want to do it. We're not forcing anyone to do it. We're not replacing any, the discipline that may come from. But we do require that they want to be a part of the repair. But again, we don't want children to believe that it's just on them to do the work. It is also the adults in the building, the adults in the community, the adults that lead them. We have to model to them how to repair that harm. So it is multi-layered.
Thank you, Ms. Manago.
Thank you. And I have two more. I'm sorry, there's so much content that we covered.
That's okay.
On, on slide nine, we were talking about the, I don't know how to say it's a double digit. The, the no referrals, the increase in lack of referrals. Was there any change in the definition or determining factor of what does or does not get referred? That might also be included in that data?
No, sir. I don't, no, not for those years. I know.
No, Ms. Allison's correct. And I was happy when Ms. Huggins made the statement. So one of the, the big picture I need for everyone to understand is that restorative practice is not an absence of an office referral being written. So if a student committed an offense that's outlined by the state for code infraction, that code infraction should still be written as an office referral. The consequence in how we look at what do we do to reteach the behavior? What do we apply as the consequence for exactly what occurred? Can look different at the school level, but the progressive discipline plan is in place to make sure that our families, make sure the students and make sure the school administrators understand what's the maximum level of a consequence that you can apply. But it does not mean an absence of an office referral. So when you see that there has been a decrease in office referral, what that means is all of the supports that you saw Ms. Allison lay out on her slides and talked about, that means that that school is implementing those support services before behaviors actually occur. And so if we're doing everything ahead of time, then those scholars should not have to come to school support for additional assistance in the form of a discipline hearing. Does that make sense? So really what we would hope is that all of the supports through student support services and all of the interventions that we provide beforehand is seeing some type of residual effect within our buildings. Where those students never cross path with my office team, because that would be because all of the failed supports, you know, were in the building. Those supports we placed in the building did not work for the student. Now we need to look at something more intensive.
Terrific. Thank you very much. The very last question, it's something that seems like an anomaly to me in the data. The, and I, slide eleven, stand by one second. Oh, right, the well-being. So the, the slide eleven, the well-being talks about the increase of five percent, but the average district staff of well-being decreasing by seven. But in the previous presentation, there was, slide ten shows the staff increasing by two and a half percent. So trying to figure out where, on one side, we're showing two and a half percent increase, another seven percent decrease.
I believe we may be looking at different surveys. So this is the panorama survey, and I think y'all were the state climate survey, correct?
We looked at that. That's perfect, Ms. Allison. That's what we, we did, Mr. Kelly. We took two different things. You could take a look at data in two ways. We use the student climate that's used for the state report card, that where eighty percent of respondents are required to get, to get a rating. And then I think Lisa, you pulled this from the pan-. What we'll work to do, Mr. Kelly, is something I think Mrs. Waters asked up above, which is once we have some panorama surveys, data, school by school, we'll provide that to the board in the board brief. So you can take a look at that. You know, your question is, in RP schools, favorable response from all, all staff of well-being increased by five percentage points, while the district staff well-being decreased by seven from spring twenty-two to spring twenty-three. That could be for a variety of different reasons, the number of respondents, but the number, the number of school, the, the number of schools, et cetera. So we can, we can break it down more for you as we get this year's panorama data.
Fair. And the, the heart of that is it just, it makes the data, it raises a question mark in the data when one survey is showing a pretty decent decrease and the other.
A good, very valid point, valid point, Mr. Kelly. Thank you.
And I, I also agree. I think being able to see it school by school would be awesome. Mr. Grabowski?
Ms. Watley, do you mind if Ms. What, Ms.? Ms. Roberts comes up and provides a little more detailed response. She does numbers a lot better than I do.
The only thing I will say about the, the data that you saw, the panorama survey actually is a way that we can progress monitor. Just like we use our interim assessments, that data sometimes will look different because the whole point of it is to be able to use that data to enact change before those summary assessments occur. I think this would probably be the same thing, where like when we use our, our map data or our ready data in order to see what areas we need to focus on before students take SC ready. We would utilize our panorama data in that same way, so that we're trying to see what areas we need to focus on. So that when they do take that climate survey, we could see something different.
Mr. Grabowski?
Ms. Joyner, I hate to bring you back up to the hot seat. I'm trying to understand the difference between Project Prevent and restorative practices.
Okay, so Project Prevent is a federally funded grant that we applied for and were awarded in 2019. There are multiple aspects to it. Restorative practice is embedded as a preventative strategy around the eighty percent that we hear about building relationships with that twenty percent to restore, which I think goes directly back to Mr. Kelly's question about the harm. And so it is the harm that has occurred in the building, but also the harm that has occurred outside of the building. And so we are really zooming in on those seven schools that has been identified based on the community and that feeder pattern that has the highest crime rate, which we know that there has been an offense, because if there's a crime that has occurred, you've had a victim, someone that has been victimized, and then someone that did the offense. And so that directly ties to restorative conversations and restorative conferences. And so restorative practice is a strategy nestled in our preventative work for Project Prevent.
And how much money have you been spending each year?
So we get the maximum, which is a million dollars a year.
So you've been handling seven schools, doing very well with a million dollars?
I've been doing very well. It is. So what I will say is I have an awesome team. We have two school embedded coaches. So we have one coach that supports the elementary schools and early learning, and then one coach that supports the two middle schools and the high school. And so what we have been doing is being very strategic. But what I will tell you is that particularly our first two years was really about building relationships so that they would trust the presenters that we were bringing in, the coaching that we were giving to the schools, and then it had, it really has been about relationships. Our team, our team has some great experience. This is my twenty-first year with CCSD. Particularly, I have always been in the North Charleston area in some capacity as a classroom teacher at Morningside, but also supporting on the curriculum and instruction side. And so lots of interactions, not only with the school community, but the community in general. Because one of the things that one of my favorite principals, Mr. Joe Williams, Dr. Joe Williams, had instilled in us back in, you know, two thousand and four, is that it was very important that we wrap ourselves around our students and get to know them on the non-academic side so that we could connect with the academics. And so that has involved a lot of conversations that aren't academic. It has involved a lot of me going to churches and going into the community, meeting people where they are in order to bring them back into the school so that they do have that trust for us. And so that has been a big cornerstone and foundation of Project Prevent. And I'm very proud of the work, and we are getting those outcomes and really excited about not only the fourteen out of seven, but I'm telling you, next year, we're going for all seventeen.
So let's talk about next year. Next year, you're going to need at least a million dollars of funding. And I'm assuming that we're going to be looking at the General Operating Fund as a source, because there's no longer the grant. What's the chance of there being another grant?
So we do have a, we have an option, which is a no-cost extension. So as I mentioned, we were awarded in 2019, and we all know what happened in 2020. And so we have what you call carryover, and we have just been very, because of those relationships that we have created, and as Ms. Allison mentioned, we do have ten community partners, and some of those partners do not require any funding. It's more of a referral base and just making sure that we communicate with them throughout the year. But we do have that option. However, we actually cannot apply for that no-cost extension until September of 2024. And then we won't know if we actually received the no-cost extension until mid to end of October of 2024. So we are currently working with a sustainability team that has been a part of the plan for any grant funded for the district, not just Project Prevent, to figure out what is with no costs, with some costs. And if we ball out and get all the money with that extension, what are our options? And so that is what we are really kind of working on right now, along with other ESER strategies for capacity building and sustainability.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Grabowski, is that everything?
Oh, I have a lot of questions, unfortunately. I, I need to understand from staff how we're breaking this out. I mean, in the future, I would expect the presentations to have this totally outlined, itemized and everything. What is the difference between staff that is being funded for mental health and the restorative practices? What's coming out of GOF and what's coming out of ESER?
So we have, I have it broken down by staff role. All of our staff play a part in all of that work. So from our school psychologists, social workers, counselors, clinical, everyone that I named earlier, they all have a hand in restorative practices, and they all have a hand in supporting the mental health and wellness of our students.
Because I'm trying to understand, from what I see, we have one school that has fully gone through the program. We have a second school that's at the second level, and then we have eight schools. So really, we only have ten schools that are actually implementing this.
So when you look at the various stages, there are different parts of implementation. So we would say that yes, they're implementing, it's just to the level that they're implementing. And again, that doesn't take away from those individual staff who may have gone to training on their own and who are bringing those practices. And earlier, as we talked about, restorative practices nestled into that larger framework of school climate initiatives and support. It's one strategy is part of the whole.
But it looks as from what I read, the, at the implementation stages, when we start hiring people, correct?
No, sir. No, sir. It's largely around professional development and application of strategies.
So what level would that be? The planning?
There is no stage that's tied to staffing.
Right. Yes, sir, Mr. Grabowski. So restorative practice is like a continuum of services, not necessarily affiliated with, when you get to level two, for example, you have to hire a, a mental health coach. Or Tasha needs to come in and hire another, you know, another school psychologist. It's, it's a continuum of services. So the staff members that Lisa referenced that are in ESER aren't necessarily, they provide services to kids. They're not necessarily assigned based on where you are in the continuum. Does that, does that add any clarity, or is that more confusing?
Until you have this broken down and line item, none of this makes sense to me financially.
Sure, sure. I, I, I understand. I think our purpose here today was really to give you an overview of the third strategy that we're using. We talked about instructional framework. We've talked about PLCs. And this third, the third and final strategy on which our associates and our, our learning services team is focused this year is the restorative, the restorative practices, along with our partners in Cajum. So we can, we can certainly work with Ms. Allison and Ms. Simmons to, to, to break things down so you can see exactly who's hired out of ESER and what supports are hired out of GOF.
And I highly recommend this by December, because having, we will be talking about with the auditors saying, and I disagree with Mr. Kennedy, on reserve funds being available for ESER funds. I don't see that happening. I mean, that's not what reserve funds are meant to be used for. So we really have to start thinking about how we're going to fund this and work this in on expenses. So I think it's really very important that we, this committee, start working very hard. And that's why in the near future, we need to start seeing some of these numbers as we work towards the budget. This is a very important program. I get it.
So. Okay, we're going to keep order. Mr. Redenbaum?
The last thing is on sustainability, is it looks like this program is built pretty heavily on teachers teaching other teachers.
So if you're talking about restorative practices, we have, we partner with the International Institute of Restorative Practices. We have trainers in our district who have been trained to be trainers and certified to do so. And so we provide the training monthly. That's what we welcome anyone to that training. And then once you become, once you are trained, and then you're, you know, free to obviously implement those strategies. And so we would not expect student, teachers rather, to teach other students in restorative practices. We would have them come to the training themselves.
Lastly, I think it's very important that a lot of these wraparound services start looking to seek their own funding rather than coming to the district for funding. I mean, they have that ability to seek the grants out there, and I think we can help them assist it. But I think that that's been proven with Ms. Joyner, as she just said, you know, ten schools, a million dollars. We spent fourteen million.
Mr. Redenbough?
Thank you.
Sorry?
I do appreciate all your, I think this is a very, very important problem. But when you see, when we go into our financials and the budget, it's critical.
And I will, we have been trying to leverage all opportunities available to us. Like I said, the state with Governor McMaster has allowed for higher billing rates through RBHS services. And we've been contracting exponentially with private providers who are willing to come to our schools, provide those services, and then be able to bill on their own, which require no money from the district. But it's honestly, it's a small drop in the bucket from what you saw with all the services that our staff provide in our schools.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. We'll make, I don't know whether the opportunity will present itself at tomorrow's audit finance to talk about reserve funds. I don't think that's an item on the agenda, but we certainly will work with Ms. Carlin and Mr. Kennedy. And we'll also talk with Ms. Simmons, Lisa and their team about a breakdown for you all so you can see what exactly is coming out of ESER. And I do want to, Mr. Kennedy has launched that group, and we maybe can provide an overview of that for you as well. So thank you all for the questions and being so engaged in the presentation.
I do have a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Wally. Didn't mean to wrap up the conversation early.
I want to go back to the Panorama survey. I have had some parents reach out and with concerns about the Panorama survey. The data that you collect from Panorama, do they send that to us and then we keep that information in-house? Or is that shared back with the national organization?
I'm so glad you asked, Ms. Wally. Mrs. Allison is really an expert in this. Ms. Allison?
I'm partnering with Ms. Roberts. No, those are our data. So it's, those are our data, our school data, and they are anonymous surveys, yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Wally, we'd go after the question, though, so they are our data. And we do allow parents to opt out of that. So I think it's important that you all, you know that as a board, that any survey we give or administer here does have that opt-out provision that we make sure to communicate with families.
And you're using the data specifically for what we're talking about today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, well, Ms. Bailey took my next question, which was the parental involvement. And I very much appreciated your answer to that. I have stated multiple times that I feel like Mary Ford is probably the mothership and the ideal for all of us. Is that the one school that you're mentioning has got the full spectrum?
Actually, that school is Lambs Elementary that you saw featured on the video. And they are working a lot with their families. And additionally, we are training their after-school staff and kaleidoscope in restorative practices. So it'll really be a comprehensive model. And I do want to give another shout out to our Charlestonary Justice Ministry's members because that was one of the ideas, was how do we really wrap around, you know, everywhere that a child is in the context of school? How can we make sure that all our adults are using the same language and the same practices so they experience that no matter where they are? It was a great opportunity.
And I may be putting the cart before the horse to ask, and since it's Lambs, and we are later in today's meeting, going to be speaking about the District Four options. What, I guess we can't really answer that yet because we don't really know what we're gonna land on. But if those schools are merged, how is that gonna change the, what you already have going on there? How's that gonna impact?
I would say that we would approach any situation in the same way that we approach any others, which is working with people, understanding the situation, getting voice from all stakeholders, and making sure that we are implementing those practices equitably amongst the needs. And I'll defer to Ms. Simmons.
An important thing to note, too, Mrs. Wally, Lisa, thank you for that, is that those schools have embraced restorative practices, Honey Park, Lambs, and Goodwin. And so, for example, Dr. Gather's, who couldn't be here with us, we featured Honey Park in some of the pieces we pulled out from the school climate data earlier. So we know all those principles are already on board. So given the will of the board, like Mrs. Allison said, we would already be working with willing partners to ensure that we provided that continuum of support.
And where, if you could, well, I want to ask about the use of existing community centers. So keep that in mind. But I also want to ask, because I see my time is getting short. In a perfect world, how many counselors, guidance counselors, school psychologists, would you have at each school? And where are we at now with that? What's our gap with that? And then at some point, using the existing community centers for some of the programs that you have in existence to further assist the community?
Thank you for the question about staffing ratios. So we have national models for our staffing ratios. For example, school psychologists, the National Association of School Psychologists has one to every 500 students. We're about one to 1,000 right now. ASCA for school counselors is one to 250, and that is the FTE formula. I would advocate that that could be lower, especially in our secondary schools. And then for social workers, recommended national models, one to 250 students. So we are far below that. We are farther along than we've ever been and grateful for that. But there is so much work that they could do with families and in our community. As to the community centers, I'm not sure that I'm poised to answer that question.
So what I'll say about the community centers is one of the additional models that we use in CCSD is making sure that there's a representative at the table for a lot of the community groups that are happening. So once again, Ms. Joyner, myself, Ms. Manigold, a lot of people that you see here, we're a part of the Medical University of South Carolina Turning the Tide Violence Prevention Program, where we meet with them on a quarterly basis. We are also a part of the ATD, Alternative Detention Community Meetings. We also are a part of the Network Mixer, which happens in North Charleston, the D-20 Collaborative that takes place downtown with the D-20 Board Advisory Board. And that list goes on and on and on to make sure that CCSD is at least at the table. You may see one individual from each of the departments present. At some of the meetings, you may see several members from each of the department present. And make sure that we are definitely collaborating with the community centers as well as the community partners that are trying to provide the additional wraparound services that they're offering out in the community. So daytime services and nighttime services we provide throughout the week.
Great. Thank you. That'll now conclude this portion. We kind of merged items 2A and 3A. And so that takes us well into our Strategic Education Committee. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Bailey. We're at item 3B.
Good evening. We will go on to item 3B, Board Goal 2.1, 2.1 Update. Sixth and seventh graders on track for algebra readiness and fall progress in middle school reading and math. Ms. Anita?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Simmons. She and Dr. Williams and Ms. Roberts are gonna pick up and talk about readiness around reading and math. And again, we believe that the restorative relationships in school climate possibly contribute to that. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Simmons and her team to share the data.
Sure thing. Thank you, Ms. Bailey, to all of our trustees. So as a part of our commitment to ensure that we keep student achievement results at the forefront, at the top of all of our work, we have this update for you that features centers on our middle school learning community and how they're progressing towards our goals. And we're attaching to this update progress indicators on how we're doing with 2.1, more and more scholars who are ready, prepared to engage and access algebra. So we wanted to remind you of this big audacious goal that we put in place a couple of years ago and speak to specifically how our middle schoolers are faring in terms of their progress with our state test. MAP is the formative assessment, thank you, Maggie. MAP is the formative assessment. MAP growth is the tool by which we gauge, determine, and monitor how well our scholars are anticipated, projected to perform on our summative assessments at the end of the year. So the same way Ms. Roberts described for you, that Panorama helps us inform daily practices. So by the time our scholars take the state climate survey, we've done some course correction. This is the same purpose of a tool like MAP. It allows teachers to make regular, steady, informed decisions about what kind of instructional moves should I attempt with this scholar or group of scholars? And so nevertheless, we are excited to share progress, starting with middle school reading. So on slide four, Maggie? Thank you. You can see here, if you train your eyes to the bar graph, over the last three years, we wanted to give you this trend, this historical look at how our scholars are doing as they enter the middle grades. As you can see, they have made substantial progress in terms of entering ready. It speaks to how well we're doing at the elementary level. But once they're at the middle grades, how they're faring from year to year. So notice a 15, a 15 percentage point increase from 2022 to fall of 2023. That's a significant increase that we attribute to some key strategies. We'll get to those. We'll get to those in just a bit, but I'll also call to your attention. At the bottom of the bar graph, you see the actual enrollment. So you know how many scholars exactly we're speaking of when we talk about this progress. Thank you, Maggie. So I showed you six through eight as a continuum a moment ago. This slide simply breaks down by grade level, how students are faring in terms of their projections towards meeting or exceeding state standards. And you can see again, for grade six, seventh, and eighth, sizable, significant, substantial progress is being made. We always think it's important to break the data points down by demographic student groups. Just so you know, we give big averages a lot of times that can hide some of the realities that rest with our scholars and how they're performing. But when you look at students with disabilities, look at our multilingual learners, students who are classified as pupils in poverty, as well as our African-American students, Hispanic scholars, those categorized as other, as well as our white students. You notice gains across the board. Some are significant than others, but nevertheless, we count it a win, a positive, that we're trending in the right direction in terms of more and more scholars able to negotiate successfully the SE-ready assessment when they take it each spring. And then we always like to sum up a segment by describing for you what we believe to be impactful in terms of the high-leverage strategies, what we've put in place that we believe is making a difference. I won't read them to you, but I will lift up a couple in particular, starting with the instructional support walkthroughs. They happen both at the district level, but also with our associate superintendents. Most recently, our academic council participated in an instructional walkthrough. And that's for the sole purpose of monitoring what's happening in our classrooms and then providing meaningful feedback, useful feedback that teachers can then synthesize, internalize, and then turnkey into some type of improvement in terms of their daily practices, as well as coaching support. So these are things that rest with learning services. In terms of our district instructional specialists, that model is designed to support everybody at the building level. So we have coaching happening at the school. And I believe, we believe, every professional deserves a coach. Somebody who can help them unpack what's happening at the building level, what's going well. Where can we get better? Where are our opportunities? Where's the low-hanging fruit in terms of how to get better at this work every single day? And with that, Dr. Ms. Roberts will pick up with the math, and then Dr. Williams.
So Maggie, we can go to the next one? One back. So as we've seen, a system-wide intentional focus on literacy has greatly impacted our student achievement in reading. And we're now setting our sights on math and algebra readiness. Board Goal 2.1 tracks our progress in grades six and seven so that we can ensure that our students are well on their way to algebra readiness for grade eight. Our current fall status of 60% of sixth-grade students and 50% of our seventh-grade students entering their grade levels projected to meet or exceed SE-ready spring targets set us up for meeting our end-of-year SE-ready targets. So this projection shows us that we are in a good place to meet those target levels. When we look at progress in grade six over the past three years, while we do see a slight dip of 3 percentage points from fall '21 to fall '22, this current fall shows a higher percentage of students by 11 percentage points entering grade level ready. This is promising news and tells us that our efforts in elementary are paying off. When looking at grade seven, fall '21 and fall '22 remain relatively constant. However, this current fall, we again see a 10 percentage point increase in our grade seven students entering grade level ready. This provides us with assurance that the strategies we are putting in place are making a difference for our students in math. Grade eight shows a similar pattern to what we saw with grade seven for fall of '21 and '22. We see that percentage of students entering grade eight remains relatively unchanged. But we are seeing growth when we look at our current fall results with a 14 percentage point increase in students entering their grade level ready or above grade level ready. This is definitely a positive indicator of our students being on track for algebra readiness. So we know that a higher percentage of our students are actually entering grade level ready, but are our students enrolling in Algebra I? When we look at the number of students who have enrolled in Algebra I in middle school over the past three years, we show progress in our goal of increasing access to Algebra I for our middle school students. It's evident that more of our students are accessing Algebra I by the time they leave middle school. We see this pattern of increased Algebra I access in our CCSD schools overall and in our acceleration schools. Again, a positive sign in the trajectory to college and career readiness for our students. So I'll now turn it over to Dr. Williams, who'll share some additional data on how our middle school students are faring in math this fall and over the past three years.
So great day, and hope you all are well. Can you all hear me? That was a joke, by the way. So I thank you all for giving us this opportunity. So I'm gonna continue with some middle school data, more specifically, the amount of scholars that are entering grade level ready. So if we look at our next slide, which we have up, so don't change that, Maggie. Right here, we have a comparison of our fall math map projected proficiency from fall '21, fall '22, and fall '23. And as we've been stating, we see in looking at this data, an increase. And what we expect in the spring of this year is more scholars being proficient or higher on the math SE-ready exam. Next slide, please. So at a first glance, we'd look at this and we'd say, wow, it looks like the proficiency levels are dropping as we move from six to seven and seven to eight. But if you look more closely at the actual cohorts, or the grade level data, you can start with sixth grade, for example. And if you look at that middle bar, that green bar that says 49%, and then you move to that seventh grade dataset, and you look at the blue bar that says 50%, that's that cohort of scholars. So as they're matriculating through middle school, we are growing our scholars. I'll give you another example. If you look at that seventh grade dataset, and you look at that green bar that says 40%, and then you move over to grade eight, and you look at the blue bar and it says 48%, that's that same cohort of scholars that we've grown. Thank you, Maggie. So typically, when we present data, sometimes we may mask those data pieces that bring us pause. And that's why we wanted to share all of our data with you this evening. This looks like a lot when you look at it originally, right? But think about it this way, let's summarize it. As you move from the top to the bottom of this chart or this table, you would want to see more green and blue versus the red and yellow. And what that signifies is that we are decreasing over the years the amount of scholars who are not meeting grade level expectations, and we're increasing the amount of scholars that are meeting and exceeding grade level expectations.
That serves a round of applause, Dr. Williams.
So as Ms. Simmons stated earlier, we want So as Ms. Simmons stated earlier, we want to focus on our scholar groups as well. And this data is in front of you, so I'm not going to read it to you. But I would like to point out that while this is not significant, a win is a win, just like the Clemson and Notre Dame game this past weekend. I just had to throw that in there, by the way. Sorry if I offended anyone. Next slide, please. So following for our math section as well, we have some key strategies. And like Ms. Simmons said, I'm not going to read all of these too, but I like to pull out two as well. The first would be the PLCs. You already had an in-depth presentation on our PLCs. And the reason why I wanted to pull this out is because that whole thing we're speaking about, I use an acronym, Depth of Knowledge, DOK. That's what we're working with within our system, raising the level of rigor is the word we use. But the way the kids are thinking more critically in our schools and the PLCs helps us do that. So I wanted to pull that out. And the final thing is OGAAP training, yet another acronym. After I promised I wouldn't give you much more after the presentation we had at the last meeting. And that's the ongoing assessment project. And what that does is it teaches teachers or give teachers the skills, I should say, to teach math conceptually. Now, that's more prevalent at the elementary school level because that's how we teared it out. But we realized in doing that kind of like deep dive on the data that we need that more at the middle school level as well. So those teachers have the skills to teach math conceptually. So it may be OGAAP or something that looks similar, but I know Ms. Simmons and her CNI team are working on getting that type of training more prevalent at the middle school level. So with that being said, that is it for our presentation, and now we're going to ask for any questions you may have.
Okay. Let's see, I'm going to start with Mr. Grabowski. Do you have any questions?
So what is this, what testing are we using? Are we using MAP or are we using SC Ready?
Actually, we're using both. So when we talked about projected proficiency, that first slide, slide fourteen, for instance, for me, that's actually MAP. All right, so we're looking at fall MAP comparison from twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three to see how kids are going to perform on SC Ready. So when I made that last statement about based on fall twenty-three MAP data, we project that we're going to have more kids score meets or exceeds on SC Ready. That's MAP data that we're utilizing to make that prediction. But when we look at some of the other tables like slides, these are all MAP. Okay.
Which ones are all MAP?
They're all MAP.
So it just says one on the on the projections. So these are really
Yes, they're they're
of test scores. Excellent. Because we're at the budget process, wraparound support services, do you have an estimate of what we're looking at increases and decreases?
For
I'm just looking at, you know, when you look at strategies as to what we're doing. Last slide. Wraparound supports world-class skills.
Yes, so the profile of the South Carolina graduate is the way we characterize that. But those are those life skills, critical thinking skills. We often talked about financial management skills. Those are all of the skills baked into wrapped around what it takes at the end of twelve years when we say this is a highly qualified graduate of CCSD, all of the soft skills, as well as these content area skills that makes for a well-rounded graduate.
Because I'm trying to understand, we're seeing an increase going up, which is good. So I'm just trying to understand what we're accounting it for. What are we counting for? Our excellent teachers, which I know we have, our excellent principals, I know we have.
All the things, Mr. Grabowski, all the things, starting with the classroom teacher and the building level leader. We can't, we can't overstate how important people are. People power this work, right? So that goes without saying, that teachers and principals impact this work. What we put on this last slide were some additional strategies that we believe make an impact and make a difference, and those things that you, for one, have talked about with program impact. So we know, we're not guessing that OGAAP, for example, is making an impact. We have done the analysis to say that teachers who have OGAAP training, their students are faring better than those without the training. And so those are the kinds of decisions that will allow us to keep trending in the right direction in terms of being at a historic level with both our math and our reading achievement right now. So for sure, we don't intend to go backwards.
Because I think it's just critical that we have this itemized, it's all these additional expenses. We know what we're paying our teachers, we know what we're doing our principals, but it's really these outside sources, outside influences, vendors, that we don't have any clue as which is going to be important for this budget to understand going forward. And now's the time to start presenting those numbers.
So I think, I think we do have, I think we, we do have knowledge. We're working on impact reports now, Mr. Grabowski, that not only focus on school level and the impact of school-level people and programs, but also district-level programs and vendors that offer the support, like what Ms. Simmons mentioned in regards to OGAAP. We've also taken a look at leading educators, a vendor that powers some of the work that Dr. Temple is doing now. We've looked at the, some of the UVA work, for example, and its impact on the reading and the math. So we are, we are doing that, members of Mrs. Simmons' team, Mrs. Roberts, and members of the assessment team are doing that just now. Buffy, if you want to give a quick overview.
And yes, we are doing impact reports on some of the larger programs, like all the ones that Ms. Huggins just mentioned, but also like our high-dosis tutoring, which would be our Saga. And you all have heard something, you know, some of that, that data before. Also, I have to say that many of the things that Ms. Allison and her team talked about tonight also relate to these gains because we know that a positive school climate, just as Ms. Huggins referenced in that very first presentation, is definitely impactful on student achievement gains. And it also does reduce those negative effects of poverty and other, other factors as well. And we know that all of the work that Lisa Allison and her team are doing is very pivotal in making a difference there.
Because obviously with the itemization and making sure that we're looking at the impact, that we're making sure that the money is going, or our resources are going to the kids that really need this help. That's why I'm asking that, you know, we start looking at this now so we can start looking into it. Because this budget is going to be very, very tight.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that, Mr. Grabowski.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to leave. I've already warned you like three times, Mr. Redenbach.
So I think, Mr. Grabowski, you're spot on. If I give you an example of Ms. Simmons and I this year in the budget, because we, we've been, we tried to do this over the course of the last budget cycle. For example, one of the high dosage tutoring groups that we use, Ms. Simmons and I collaborated, worked with our associate superintendents, Dr. Appleshomer and Mrs. Haynes, for example, and reduced the amount that we contributed to one of those vendors because we looked at the return on investment. We knew it was making an impact, but we had to look at what we spent versus, and that's, so, so we, we've been doing that through one budget cycle, and we know it's going to be critically important as we work through the next. Michelle, is there anything you want to add?
That's it, Mr. Grabowski. I believe Ms. Huggins summarized it nicely.
So if I could add one thing about sustainability, like the PLC work, for instance, like I mentioned earlier at the last presentation, a lot of what we're doing is we're making sure that a lot of us at the district level, for instance, when we have that training, it's not just the principals and the coaches in the schools, it's the district instructional specialist that works with Ms. Simmons' department that are being trained as well. And while I may not be an expert, I think I can speak pretty well to the PLC process. As a matter of fact, as a part of our instructional walks that Ms. Simmons spoke about, I put myself down if a school needs support with implementing PLC because I feel like, you know, I've been through enough of the training where I can help them turnkey to the building. So we're thinking at that level as it relates to sustainability as well, with a lot of our initiatives that we have funded out of SIR.
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. I first want to just express how humbled I am to look at this data and have the honor of sitting here and just admiring the amazing work of y'all and the principals and the teachers and the support staff. It's moving. It's truly moving to be able to see these kind of gains and, and yeah, honored is the only phrase I can come up with, just to be, to be on the receiving end of this kind of report. So thank you to, to, to everyone who's been involved for, well, for, for all the hard work that contributes to this. There are two kind of technical questions I have. They seem tertiary at this point. The one thing I do want to say as we, as a team, challenge one another to do better, at the same time, I'm blown away by the gains I see. I don't want us to settle for fifty percent, which is still where we're at. Because the other side of that is half of our students aren't where they need to be. So I recognize you all, you all know that, but, but truly phenomenal work to you all.
So that one.
Yes, just thank you for a very detailed report. And thank you for answering my question because when I looked at it at home, I was a little confused. But you answered the question. I was looking at it and wondering if we should be focusing on the progression of the students. And you explained that, yes, we should look at from sixth grade, then they're the seventh graders and the eighth grader, and that's where we see the gain. So thank you for clearing that up. And Ms. Simmons, thank you for explaining the profile of a rural, of a South Carolina graduate. That's a part of the strategy for world-class skills. Dr. Williams, I'm just going to go back to you one more, like the little kid say, one more gain to talk about flex, flex periods. I'm really concerned about how many of our schools are utilizing that as a strategy. If we are actually seeing gains in schools that are utilizing it, I know we, can we make things mandatory? But I think that that's something that we, I'm really, I really would like to see us use that a little more.
Okay, so when I spoke about flex, and I can't quite remember what meeting we were in, I spoke about scheduling is difficult when it's a large number of scholars in a building and they have a number of lunches that they have to have in place for those kiddos. But for the most part, our schools that we're seeing some of that data that you're referencing, Mr. Kelly, they have a flex period. So right now, myself, along with Dr. Colleen Knauer, she's my right hand, left hand, I like to tell folk, we're actually walking through schools and observing the flex periods just to see where we are with them. Not because we have concerns, but more so because we want to see how we can better support them. And we're more concerned about the math right now and making that a priority. Of course, we don't want to forget about that ELA piece as a part of the flex period. But we're doing the walkthrough, walkthroughs now to answer your question, just to kind of assess where we are with the flex period. So hopefully, we'll have some type of information as to where we are, how schools are doing, et cetera, as it relates to the implementation of the flex period. So I know that's a lot, but, but the schools that we're most concerned about have that flex period because they can accommodate it in their schedules. And so we're just thinking through for the larger schools, how can we do it in some schools? And I hate to just put a school out there, but Carrion, for instance, they have a larger number and they're trying in some shape, form, or fashion to do some type of acceleration support within their schools, even though they know they can't have a true authentic, like thirty-five to forty-minute flex period. So we're just thinking through some things and being creative as to how we could do it in schools that have those large amount of scholars.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Waters.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, for the report. The only question I had, do we, we have Algebra I in person in all of our middle schools?
Algebra I, yes. I have to think about it, and I'm looking at Buffy. It's the geometry that I know we don't have in person because, of course, we want to make sure kids have the skills to be successful, and geometry is a lot more conceptual, which is why we keep speaking about conceptual math. So for some of our schools, they don't have a number of scholars, and we're working on that, of course. That's why we have this goal that have the skills to be successful in geometry. So we have that virtual option where a teacher who's certified in geometry teaches those kiddos.
Okay, so it's geometry, not Algebra I. Okay, that's helpful to know. Although I, obviously, when we set this goal, we talked about access and making sure it's available in person for all the kids, especially when I think about the, the enrollment at the CAS, for instance, in D four versus West Ashley and Wando and all of that. You know, I just want to make sure that our students are actually getting the requisite math that they need to go and participate in those programs that can get them ready to enter the real world. So anyway, just putting that out there, I, I wanted to catch up on that. And so I'm glad to know Algebra I at least is in person.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes, this is a really, really quick follow-up to Ms. Waters. It's in the schools, Algebra I is in the schools in person, but is it mandated for each student? Because I see how we have the fluctuation of how many people are in there. So do they get to choose to go into it, or how do we get it to be part of the mandate of the core curriculum?
So it's not mandated. At this point, what we actually have in place is, Mr. Calhoun, looking at skills that kids have so we can ensure they're going to be successful. And that's why this goal has been put in place. This goal has been put in place so we can make sure, not just at the middle school level that we're starting early at the elementary level, with ensuring that kids have those skills so that once they get to middle school, they all can have access to Algebra I and be successful. I shouldn't just say have access and be successful in Algebra I. So we have some work to do in that area. And like I said, that's the intent of this goal. That's really the intent of this goal. So no, all kids aren't taking Algebra I at, at the middle school level at this time because, you know, we have to beef up some skills, starting at the elementary level, but that's our goal. That's our intent.
And do you see a trend with us over the next five to ten years of us actually moving towards the mandated Algebra I within elementary, well, within
Well, not mandated, but but, but all kids having access and being successful. So I, I want to ask Ms. Roberts to probably chime in because that's some of the data that she presented.
So I would not say that necessarily all students would be taking Algebra I, but we certainly want to see an increased access to the course, just as Ms. Waters and you have pointed out, and also an improvement in success, right, in taking the course and then taking the EOC at the end of the year. So those are two things that we are working on as a district. There are lots of supports in place, but I'm sure that we're going to be working on some others.
And I have one more piece. I want to go back to that, a win is a win situation. I'd make a guarantee if I'm still here in two thousand and twenty-seven, that we're going to significantly increase that number. Because I do believe that, you know, we have the current building blocks in place to, to make that happen in the future for our kids. Again, it goes back to that training, that OGAAP training or something similar, like I said, for middle school scholars because I always like to be realistic, and it's never any fault to any of us when we just need certain tools or certain skills. But I was taught math procedurally, like most of you all may have been taught math. That's one times one is one, you know, you divide something by that number, you get a certain answer. But that's not how math is taught now. It's the conceptual thinking surrounding math. So you think about it this way, all of our teachers were taught math procedurally. They went to college and were taught how to teach math procedurally, for the most part. And now we're asking them to teach math conceptually. That's just something difficult to do. And like I said, we want to make sure we're giving our teachers the skills to, to make that happen. And I think that's the first key, Mr. Calhoun, to getting, increasing the numbers for our kiddos that are accessing and being successful in Algebra I.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Calhoun.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Watley.
I don't have anything.
Ms. Temple.
Well, I think it's really appropriate to have this report this afternoon because one of the things, our team that I'm working with, Dr. Jerome Harris and Dr. Jackie Haynes, we were talking about math, and we were talking about the complexity, and we were talking about the importance of preparation at the elementary level and the access of the algebra in middle schools. It's good to hear that all of our middle schools have algebra now because we were at a point where we didn't have it, and, and that was certainly not helpful to students advancing. So I think the achievement that we're seeing is, is good. It's, you know, instruction is complex and it, and it takes time. So raising the expectations and having our younger children have access to better conceptual math is really important. And then I, I think with this goal, I think one of the things we'll have to just keep looking at is, you know, some students are going to be ready for algebra and some developmentally, because there is a mental component to when are you able to handle the abstractness of algebra that I don't think, I, I would guess that we'll never reach a point of a hundred percent of our students being ready for algebra at eighth grade. But I know they will be ready. Some of that is just age appropriateness and developmentally. So thanks for the, all the work that you're doing. And I know our team's going to spend a little bit more time on the math. So, Mr. Williams, we will bring you back a report.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Dr. Williams, would you be able to speak to Mr. Calhoun's question just a little more about the not being mandatory? Is it because of state requirements that we can't make Algebra I? Is it because of state requirements that we can't make Algebra One mandatory? You know, graduation, we have, you know, you have to have English one, two, three, four, your social studies, you know, your sciences. Is it a state policy that we can't have Algebra One as being mandatory in middle school?
If you don't mind, I'll just chime in a little on that. So with Algebra One, Algebra One is considered advanced curriculum or an advanced pathway for students. The intent is that a student would have already mastered those eight grade standards in order to be eligible to take Algebra One, right? You've already mastered all the middle school standards, you're ready to, to move into algebra. We are very hopeful and we think our data is saying that more and more students will be there. That's what we're seeing and what we showed you tonight. We're seeing that in access and we're also building in some supports and scaffolds to make sure that, that that is occurring. So that, I hope that helps answer that. It's considered an advanced.
Yeah, I know. You can, you can be on a college prep track or non. But I guess my question is, even if you're not, it's just basic now. Algebra now is really basic math compared to, you know, when I was in school. So it's just seemed like we are kind of lowering our expectations. I don't.
Yeah, I think to piggyback and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Buffy. When we think about Algebra One, you're correct in that, you know, algebra is not as conceptual as geometry. Geometry is, are some higher level math courses like your calculus. So I think the risk that we take, if we say, well, you know, algebra is at a certain level so we can really kind of, you know, create a pathway for kids just to take that algebra. They're still going to be missing the skills, like Buffy said, if they don't have those grade level standards mastered. When they take the higher level math courses at the high school level, like the geometry, like the Cal One, like the Cal Two. So we want to make sure that, you know, there is access and kids can be successful. But we want to also make sure they have the foundational skills that they need in math so that they're not struggling once they get to those higher levels of math at the high school level. If that kind of makes sense to you. So that's why we're really careful about at the middle school level, forcing kids in the algebra if they don't have the foundational skills to be successful in like your seventh, your sixth or your seventh or your eighth grade math.
Yeah, I would just like to see us do a little more. And I say that not so much for the college track, but for the workforce track. We have employers here in Charleston, you know, the Boeings and the Volvos and Mercedes that our kids can't pass the test to get, you know, employed, employment. So I just think that, you know, oftentimes we focus on college, but we're not focused on workforce.
Understood.
Thank you for that, Ms. Roberson. I, to answer your question very bluntly, I don't, the State Department doesn't require algebra in the middle school, as you know from your background. But I, I don't know that the State Department would tell a district. I don't know that they would overstep and tell a district or a board that it couldn't ask all of its scholars to have Algebra One in the middle school. The question would be whether the board in consultation with the district would, would, would opt to take such a step. And I, I think what Mrs. Robertson, Dr. Williams are saying is we would want to ensure that all of our students along that continuum had the skills they needed to be successful in that course. Since it is such a gateway course and some data, thankfully, at which we looked in academic council last week, showed us, I believe, that some of our students who are taking it earlier aren't as prepared as we think they might be once they get to college because they're opting out of math. Sometimes they're the second part of their junior and their senior year. And so we would want to work with you all, Mrs. Roberson, to make sure whatever we set up for students would serve them best, as you suggested. And all students, particularly those on the workforce track. So we'll take this into consultation. I don't know how full our agenda is on Wednesday, but we'll have a discussion about it and maybe circle back with you all if that's appropriate, Ms. Roberson.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chairman, if I could have one question just to follow up on this. You, you talked about, I just want to see if you could clarify. You have CCSD with acceleration schools, CCSD without acceleration schools and acceleration schools as a way, as a form of access of Algebra One. Could you just clarify that?
I'm looking for the slides, sorry about that.
It's slide twelve.
Thank you so much. Yes, so basically we wanted to provide you just with a breakdown so that you could see if we looked at all CCSD, excuse me, CCSD schools, including our acceleration schools, how many of those students were actually going into the algebra class? Or we also wanted to look at just our acceleration schools and show you that it's not just, you know, certain schools where this is happening. We're seeing these increases in all of our schools, which is what we want to see and that we're very proud that we're seeing. But that's why we did that.
It's silly me. I thought there was another school. I didn't do the math, simple math. Subtract one, two, two, four from one, one, five, three. What do you get? Seventy-one.
Oh, okay, I get it now too. That was my question. Thank you, Keith.
Okay, and I just have one question. How long have we been offering Algebra One to eighth graders? I know when my youngest daughter, she just graduated, she took Algebra One in the eighth grade. And from then till now, how many, how mu, how many of our children that have taken it in the eighth grade have actually passed and excelled in it? Do we have that data?
I'm going to be honest with you. I cannot tell you that right off the top of my head. I am very upset that I cannot tell you off the top of my head, but I will get you that information.
Thank you. Well, that was the last question that I had. Anyone else? Okay, with that being said, we're going to go on to item three C. New D four elementary and primary school at Lamb's campus. Mr. Baroy?
Right, I'm in the game. Thank, thank you, Ms. Bailey, Board of Trustees, Acting Superintendent Huggins. I'm representing a, a team of leaders on this project for the Dorchester Road Corridor. Associate Superintendents Jackie Haynes and Jennifer Swerengen, who are with us in the room today and their teams have been a big part of this process. Two rows behind me, Kim Foxworth, responsible for early childhood and Jasmine Shah, Capital Programs Executive Director, both have been a big part of this process. I'm just getting the chance to bring it all together and, and brief you all on where we stand. Slides two and three are, I just want to point out where this program fits in with our three pillars. We provide quality educational space that leads to hopefully rigorous grade level instruction and also attracts and maintains highly qualified leaders and teachers. Our spaces here with the early edu, I mean, with a family education center, we're hoping to provide additional wraparound services in this concept as well. These three pillars support our three goals listed there. Moving on to the next slide, this slide I presented to you back in September that just really brings everybody up to speed on where we, where we came from. Back in twenty nineteen is in the yellow banner at the bottom. The Board of Trustees voted to consolidate the three schools within three point one miles of each other, each having less than five hundred students enrolled on their campuses. The replacement school at the center school, which was Lamb's, was put on the referendum that was passed by taxpayers in twenty twenty. The board then voted to put it in wave two in twenty twenty-one, which meant we're ready to execute, begin executing the project right now. This was the original scope of the project. It was an elementary school on the Lamb's campus and an edu, early education and family development center also on Lamb's campus. This was going to require us to lease land from Joint Base Charleston, a little over fourteen acres. With a completion of the elementary school in May of twenty twenty-six and the early learning center in twenty twenty-seven. The next two slides just provide some numbers on where we stand with students on the Dorchester Road Corridor. We've broken it up by K one and second through fifth because of our current recommendation on how to divide these schools up. The real message on this slide is that if you look at twenty-three and twenty-four and compare that all the way out to twenty twenty-eight, there is no growth in this area. It'll stay flatline, which really helps us in determining how large our school ought to be. That is a very detailed analysis, looking at future developments in this area for the three school zones, as well as looking at the cohorts as students pass through the, the grades and those respective schools and where, and where we end up. The next slide shows early learning data in the past. You can see that we've had close to two hundred students, a little under two hundred students across the last six years in these three schools. Looking ahead, the table at the bottom that shows future projections, trying to capture what we might have. Early learning is probably the most difficult to predict because we don't have the previous year to go off of. We're really looking at new kids entering this, entering the school district. But what we're showing here is that our projected total for early head start, head start, pick, CD and kindergarten is four ninety-five for those three schools. If you just look at Honey Park and Lamb's, it's about two hundred and ten on this total, on this total. So after we presented to you in early September, we had two public meetings. The thirteenth and the nineteenth, we had a hundred and ninety-two people sign up as attendees. Eighty-eight of those were employees, eighty-three of those were parents. We presented three options. Option one was what was approved by the previous Board of Trustees to consolidate all three schools on the same campus. Option two was to consolidate Lamb's and Goodwin and also bringing the Honey Park early ed students over. Option three was to consolidate Lamb's and Honey Park and bring the Goodwin students over to the campus. During that meeting, we had thirty supporters that said, hey, hey, how about taking a look at leaving everything as it is? Leaving the three schools of where they're at. There were, however, a significant number of supporters of the consolidation of Lamb's and Honey Park. And I'll talk about rationale behind that here in a couple of slides. The next slide just shows some individual comments grouped by the numbers. I mentioned, I mentioned the comments at the meeting about not consolidating the schools and leaving all three schools where they, where they are. As you know, this is the sales tax where our referendum, it was billed on constructing a new school at this campus. We cannot construct a new school at the three campuses. We don't have the money for that as well. If I divide the hundred million up among the three campuses, I cannot possibly build three new schools at those three campuses for the amount of money that, that is there. However, we could use some of the funds, bring it back in and use it for capital maintenance to keep up the current schools as is. I will comment that there was a lot of discussion at these meetings about transportation and where kids live. One thing we did find out during the analysis was that Goodwin is, has a high number of walkers. It's a very close proximity. It's a very close proximity to most of the homes. Nearly a hundred students walk to that school, which does make it an outlier for the other two schools. Honey Park has a zone on Dorchester Road on the, on the one side. Lamb's has it on the other side and those zones actually go past the other school. So it does, it does lend well to that, that consolidation. So we came back, regrouped as a team based on those public meetings. We put forward the option four, which was to essentially do nothing. As I mentioned earlier, splitting the money among those three schools wouldn't allow us to build three new schools. And Honey Park does not have this, have the space there to build a new school and keep the current school in place. We did, however, come back with an option five and that was to consolidate Lamb's and Honey Park, but to create two schools on the same campus with a common space in between. This concept really hit at one of the recommendations that came from both families and a lot of teachers of managing a school and providing that personalized support for the number of students. And by doing this, we continue to have leadership managing two schools, although one would be a primary and one would be an elementary school. It does put forward our concept of early education, keeping the little kids together, consolidating them, providing better supports for more numbers of younger, younger students and does with the smaller numbers rather than having twelve hundred. It does provide that personalized community service that both parents and teachers were looking forward to on, on, on the new campus. So at that point, we laid out what that school, new school would look like. This is, this is a conceptual diagram. The parking lot in front is where Lamb's is now. The school would be, be built completely behind the existing facility. On the far left is the wing for the second through fifth graders would be a two-story wing. In the center, highlighted by the orange color there would be the common space, the big box space, multi-purpose room and cafeteria. And to the right, the T shape on the far right would be the early education, the primary school with kindergarten, first grade, CD, early head start, head start and the, and the pick classes. So we then went forward with another, a couple of community meetings. Prior to this meeting, we did have, we did have separate meetings with the faculty of Honey Park and Lamb's to give them an opportunity to provide some input and also provide some feedback on this option. That's why I think we have a smaller number of people participating in this meeting. I, I think that the faculty got that information directly from us prior to these meetings. And we took on board some of the input that they had, some of the concerns they had with how the new school would be shared, how teachers would be assigned, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But the two public meetings we had on the nineteenth of October, we had very few negative responses, negative comments. And in, in general, the folks that were there seemed to support the consolidate option number five that we presented. Next slide. So this is the details of that recommendation that was presented at that last, those last two public meetings that we're bringing forward to the group to hopefully carry on to the board meeting next week. And that is to build a five hundred student primary school, a six hundred student elementary school with shared spaces in between. You can see the breakdown of grades, grades there. Again, the, the choice of consolidating Lamb's and Honey Park over, including Goodwin, was in part based on the distance for the families from Goodwin. A lot of them are walkers. It does have the least amount of outstanding capital maintenance of the three campuses. Although there is no multi-purpose room at Goodwin, there is a larger multi, larger media center and a larger cafeteria than the other two schools. And again, the distance, it's a little more of an outlier compared to the new, compared to the Lamb's campus and, and Honey Park. Some of the benefits of this recommendation. One of the, again, biggest ones that we received from parents and from staff was having schools that were smaller to, to take care of and provide the best services possible from the, the population that we serve on the Dorchester Road Corridor. This concept would reduce the number of students from eleven eighty-four to eight thirteen. And even in that eight thirteen, we have two separate schools, not, not one, not one school. Does retain the leadership of the two schools and allows for, again, that effective oversight, providing support to not only the teachers, but the families. We would still have a family development center for those wraparound services. The single drop-off and pickup essentially covers, if you've got, if you're a parent with a student in early education and a parent with an older student in elementary school, you're going to the same campus for the drop-off. You swing through and drop off your early ed student and swing over on the same campus for your older student. It allows a single point rather than, rather than two. And then lastly, it eliminates the need for the lease with Joint Base Charleston, which was going to cost us starting at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year if we did not meet the minimum requirement of having military students in the school. And that price would escalate over the fifty-year lease to six hundred and sixty-two thousand. That property is also part of an existing base lease with housing, housing contractor. We would have to pay the legal fees to get out of that, have them get out of that contract as well. One thing not mentioned on here, I hear in this, in this meeting today, a lot of needs that we're going to have in the future for operational money. With the programs that have been effective, this consolidation would result in some savings of general operating fund between having those two schools consolidated on a single campus. When you look at my costs, custodial grounds, fire alarm, building systems, there will be a, a small savings that would come back to the coffers to use for program, program elements. If you all approved this program, the next steps would be, are listed here. We would come back to you in January for a reallocation of funds. Right now, the construction budget we have is higher than what is needed. And we would come back to you with the improvements that would be needed at Goodwin to compensate for some of those resources, but we want to do a full accounting of the funding that's needed. It will not require additional funds. There will be additional funds available on the capital side from this change. Uh, simultaneously with that analysis, uh, there was a strong demand signal for the teachers uh to begin discussing how this process would work as far as which teachers would be assigned, assigned where. Uh, I can say, and this goes to Mr. Calhoun's question earlier about how that would be handled. Um, we did this for the District Three consolidation for middle schools. We did this for the District Ten consolidation for middle schools. And H R will get out into the field and have those, those discussions with teachers to make them uh confident in the process. Uh, everybody will land on their feet as they did with these last two uh programs that were pu- pushed forward. And, and I feel confident that we would be able to do the same with this uh consolidation. Uh, next summer, we would begin some consolidation effort. Part of the existing Lambs campus, uh, part of the existing building would have to be demolished for the new footprint. Uh, we would have some mobiles installed on that campus for the start of school year in August of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we would complete the design next fall. We would start constructing in twenty twenty-five, and then the school opening would be in the fall of twenty twenty uh seven, two years, a little over two years for construction. So uh, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of questions out there, but uh, subject to your questions, this, this is the brief that we're providing for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. Now we will open it up for discussion, Mr. Calhoun.
Yes, I have a few questions. Um, first, um, because we've been going over this for the last couple of months. And one thing I don't believe we truly have touched on yet would be from the academic side. So, um, Ms. Augers and Ms. Simmons, what do you see like will be the pros and cons of, of the murder of the two?
To be honest, Mr. Calhoun, it's been a minute since I've engaged with this particular project. When it, uh, at the onset though, in twenty nineteen, um, under the former superintendent, Dr. Postway, we had a, a lens for how do we ensure that programming is weightier, uh, more robust? Anytime you have a small school, right? They're not resourced, they're not outfitted, they cannot be programmed at the same rate at which a, a large school can be. So the obvious, the evident plus of a merger like this would be, we can provide more, more in terms of F T Es, full-time employees, and in terms of um just overall programming that they don't currently have at the, at the time, at this current time. Um, do you want to add on to that, Ms. Augers?
I think Ms. Simmons, I, I think Michelle's spot on in that. Um, Mr. Calhoun, there'll be access, there'll be more opportunity for students. Um, smaller schools have limited opportunities for um special areas, for example, exploratories. This opens up those opportunities, it opens up more opportunities for um ch- children to have access to, to other things. We um, we can take a look again at the data and present where each school is now. But we do believe that this consolidation would offer more opportunity for children. I've seen this Fox work in the back. Uh, do you want to add anything, Kim, in regards to pre-canny early childhood for the center there and what you've seen in your experience?
Um, we're already set up for, um, we currently already have two, uh, one early, one head start classroom there. And we, it is, it is full, and so that's why we would add another one. And so, and then early, we already have the two classrooms and they're excelling. And so, um, that's one of my most stable head start sites. So I feel like it would be um very positive for the community. And uh, Honey Park does not have any head start or early head start sites. So that although head start and early head start are basically where the parents can apply, there are no head start and early head start at Honey Park. So it does give that community access to that early childhood program. We do have for child development, all of our classrooms um do utilize the same curriculum, same assessment. So I feel like the benefit, we would just continue to um partner, have our teachers partner together. We do that anyway, so I don't think it would be any negative. It would be more like Mr. Bowery said, the more C D classes we can have together, the more collaboration, the more opportunity for them to observe each other for the um, to team together. So anytime we can pull our early childhood classes together, it's positive.
All right. And so the second part of that, what about any downsides do you see of this merger or consolidation, excuse me?
So again, the obvious win, the obvious plus is the um combining of resources. The obvious um decline or negative that one might call up is the, nobody wants to give up their school. That's just the truth of it. Schools are, um, they tend to be the hallmark, the hub, the heart of communities. And so anytime we pursue, talk about, even gesture that there are small schools that we may have to collapse or combine, that's stressful. That's stressful and that generates angst for, for a community because of the unknown. Uh, and I did not have a chance to participate in these community engagement opportunities, but I'll further offer that I think the compromise, not combining three, but perhaps two is, I think, a little bit more digestible because nobody wants a, a max size, a maximum huge one thousand-plus student body Title One school. And so I think that the team did their due diligence in trying to come up with an alternate compromise that more people, not a hundred percent will be happy, but more people could live with.
All right, um, Ms. Berri, um, with the meetings, with the principals and leaders and um, how did that go? With the, the principals as well as the teachers, not the, the community meetings?
So uh, just to share, I, I think that uh, as Ms. Simmons mentioned, there, there is always um animosity or, or anxiety when you look at consolidating here. Uh, but I, I sense that the, the school community, the school leadership and the faculty of those two schools are ready and interested and anxious about working together, develop what this new school will look like. Uh, we would bring uh team members in from both of those schools to look at those spaces because all's we've done is lay out the concept so far. Uh, that would be a great start to ensuring their part of what this school will, will look like. And I think they were excited about being part of that.
And lastly, um, so we can move forward, uh, uh, Honey Park would stay in place until twenty twenty-seven?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, so they wouldn't, there wouldn't be no early moving over to the site or anything?
No, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be. Uh, and because of that readjustment of the school configuration, we wouldn't look to do a mid-year move. Uh, we would look to start this move at the start of a school year, which would be in the fall of twenty twenty-seven.
And I'm sorry, my last question, can you address the traffic concern again? Because even just looking at this, um, there would be no type of staggered um bus site drop-off of, of, well, no staggered uh bell times or anything, it would all have the same bell time. But then we will have a extra amount of people going on, and onto the campus at the same time?
We, we would, that's a, it's a great point. So there has been a traffic study done to determine what improvements would be required at that campus. That initial traffic study was done for all three schools combined. So it involves uh turning lanes uh off of Dorchester Road. Uh, incre- and includes increased stacking capability on the campus so we can get cars off of Dorchester Road and have them wait there. That's something we don't have at any of the three campuses right now. And it does help in, in a big way, there is no traffic light at Honey Park, Michigan Avenue that goes on a Dorchester, off a Dorchester Road. So that has been a significant tra- traffic safety issue uh down at that intersection. So that would be completely eliminated.
Thank you.
Mr. Waters?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, and um, thank you, Mr. Calhoun, for asking the academic question because that was one of mine. Um, the projections that I um was looking at, or that you mentioned for enrollment remaining flat. When this project was initially mentioned to me three years ago, um, there was mention of wanting to create seats for the families of uh the military officers on the base. Has that been factored into the enrollment projections? Um, and I'm asking because my concern is that, you know, if more folks get interested in bringing their students, does that create a situation where there are fewer seats for kids in our zones?
So that's an, another good point, and we've had some, some dialogues with uh the military leaders at Joint Base Charleston to make sure that we're beating their knees, but they understand our limitations. Uh, they currently have a child development program on base. So unless we accepted more early ed students, uh, either head start, C D, they can accommodate what they have now, but we have that ability to flex if there is, if there is room and we want to fund it. The older students, uh, we're working through a, a possible uh process right now, which would involve a change to the board policy to allow students in the higher grades to attend that school that might not necessarily be zoned for the school. Uh, Dorchester Two is already doing that, uh, allowing those military students uh to, to attend. Uh, we have done it on a case-by-case basis. We're going to keep close track of those numbers. I, I think there will be space available in the elementary school, but we can always adjust that spigot based on where we stand with space. And I don't think at any time will we give up space from students that live in Charleston County that are qualified, that are zoned for the school, that we, we won't get to that point.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't, I mean, from what I've seen from board actions, I don't see a, a board approving it, but just wondering if there become any negotiations with the Joint Base. And that enters the conversation that that's not decided at the district level, that there's a certain um number of seats that are set aside, particularly, I'm glad to hear that they have their own C D program because I definitely think our students need C D. Um, but even in those other grades, just a, just a note that I would hope that those, that sort of agreement would not be made even at the district level.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and then also, can you um restate, uh, because I did get some questions, and I, I think it occurred over like three or four slides. What was the total number of folks who showed up at the community engagement meetings in person uh as well? Because I see the highlighted numbers from the survey responses, but I think it would be nice to state the amount of engagement.
So the numbers that, the numbers that are on the slide were those that signed in uh between the two meetings in September was a hundred and ninety-two. And there was um, what the last slide here? Forty-six, yes, forty-six at the next two meetings.
Thank you, I'm just always thinking about folks who aren't, you know, who are having to follow along and keep up. Um, also, um, the last question is just in, in terms of this combined campus situation, I'm hearing it expresses two schools, will those two schools have all unique facilities? So they won't be sharing any sort of services or spaces?
So that, that'll be looked at by the working group. They clearly will share the big box spaces, the cafeteria and multipurpose room, but other spaces we'll take a closer look at. There's pros and cons as an example, I'll give one simple one is the nurse's clinic. So we, we have one point oh and one point oh with those two schools right now. So each school has a nurse. By combining the nurse's clinic, there's a chance that that would be less than a two point oh. So you think, okay, wait a minute, it's going to get less. But the, the problem we have now with a one point oh at each of the schools is that that school nurse is sick on a given day. There's no other coverage at that school, we have to, we have to swing somebody over there. By having a one point eight or a one point six at a combined school, there's a chance we have that backup coverage and another nurse that knows all of the students. But that's one example where we need to look across the two schools and meet with the leaders of those schools and see what makes, what makes sense for the complex.
Got you, yeah, I appreciate that. One of the things that I'm um thinking about is how we often don't, uh, we often discourage putting two, co-locating schools like when our charters ask, and so that comes with great difficulty, it's been stated. And so just want to make sure we're thinking about that when we think about two leaders having to share space like that.
The, the good thing about this alternative is that they are not competing schools, so they don't have the same grades. Uh, the, the hope is that the, the uh two through five school is going to want those kids coming over, ready to go in second grade. And likewise, the, the, the primary school is going to say, I want to see those kids leave fifth grade when they walk off the campus. So I think although there may be some competition, I think this is a little different than we've had in other circumstances with them wanting to work uh more collaboratively.
Okay, Ms. Watley?
I just um want to thank you again for, at the last minute, putting this together for the September, the eleventh meeting and, and giving us all a refresher of what the previous board had um decided and being flexible to go back to the drawing board and, and take another look at it in response to the community's concerns. Um, at the September, the eleventh meeting, you mentioned uh by combining all three schools, there was a savings, if I recall correctly, of approximately five hundred thousand, about a half a million dollars. With the option five, uh, I realize it may not be a savings of um half a million, but any idea what the savings would be that we could apply to these other services?
So just looking at the raw, at the raw numbers, I have to take a look at it in, in more detail, but it looks like um the cost for, operational cost out of my pot of money. Again, this is custodial, utilities, grounds, for those two schools is eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, uh, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand. Uh, I, I believe that we could get a minimum of thirty-four thousand back um off of that total by having it at one campus. Uh, that's not even to account in, to take into account routine maintenance that you don't have to do in a new building. Uh, so that is strictly the uh cost that I just mentioned. So there is some savings, not, not significantly, not as significant as compared to combining all three schools and eliminating those off the books.
That, that's all I have.
Hey, Ms. McKinney?
So it was wonderful to be at two of those meetings, and I think we all owe a debt of gratitude to the parents and staff that showed up at both. Um, the first um with lots of questions and disappointments. And the seconds with, with option five, a lot of agreement. So uh, we owe a lot to the community for their input and the district for listening to the input. And I think it is a, option five is a wonderful solution for all of those scholars.
If, if I can add just, Ms. McKinney, I, I completely agree. I said that there was, it was uh in one, one way, very refreshing to see the spirit uh among each of the three schools. Uh, I'd like to think that spirit, along with the great uh uh results that those three schools have, the great panorama survey results, whether it be well-being, sense of belonging, all of them were positive. I'd like to think that that will carry it forward rather than having to start with nothing uh if the schools were not well off. So I, I, I think that's very much a positive in that light.
Ms. Dunmire?
Yeah, um, Mr. Berri, thank you for your detailed um report. Uh, Mr. Calhoun and Ms. Waters um asked most of the questions that I had. Um, you addressed the facilities concerns um in, but I want to um speak to Mr. um Bregman with the F T Es and out, and allocations. How soon um will we start looking at how, what that would look like when, with, for the Hunley and Lambs? I mean, Hunley and, yeah, Lambs.
We're talking the school year twenty twenty-six, right, Jeff?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
August of twenty twenty-seven.
Is it the fall of twenty-seven?
Yes, sir.
So that would be twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so we're several years out. But in, in processes before where we've combined schools or closed schools, we started in the fall of, I, I, if I understand correctly, it'd be the year before the building opens. So we start that fall, um, depending on if the principles are in place, if we still, those principles remain, looking at staffing that's needed um and starting to talk to teachers and other employees that might be impacted about transition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berri. Um, and I'm just going to ask this question about overcrowding, um, making sure it's a large enough campus. Let's just, the numbers kind of flatline?
We, we believe it, yes, ma'am. We're very cautious and um very concerned to make sure we don't set ourselves up for having to have trailers on any new campus. Uh, I feel very confident in the numbers that we're projecting and in the space we're going to provide. So, good question, and uh, we'll, we'll be ready.
Okay, okay. And just my, my last question, uh, you, you used the word significant. You said a significant wanted to combine um the two schools. So if you said a significant number wanted to combine, do, um, are you referring to the last um meetings that you had?
So I was referring to the first public meeting uh in which they, there was a higher number of, of individuals that wanted, that thought the consolidation of Honey and Lambs made the most sense. I will caveat that or caution that by saying, we might not have given them an option that they actually wanted. Um, so that was the best option that they could choose from. So I don't, I don't put a lot, I'm not counting votes, I'm not saying that that won by X number of votes. I'm just using that as an indicator uh that that was the best of the options that were presented.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
I've been asked.
Okay, Mr. Gorbowski?
In regards to the construction and the effects on the um existing Lambs Elementary School, uh, what I see, Lambs, I mean, there's no overlay to show exactly where Lamb sits on the parking lot. Um, the, all the property, I guess, to the west of- The, all the property, I guess, to the west of Lambs, is, is that just open property? So there's, because I see you're calling for um, trailers.
So there is a portion of the existing Lambs that will have to be demolished to allow for construction of the new school. Uh, the capital team believes that we can provide trailers in the interim that'll provide acceptable space, but allow us to continue on with that project. Uh, we've had a number of schools in, in the recent past that we've built right next to an existing school. Uh, we've done that uh, safely and we've actually done it where uh, the kids can learn a lot about what's going on. Uh, they'll be able to look out, uh, look out and see what's happening uh, at that, with that new facility. And we hope that we can uh, bring them into the mix to help them understand construction and how that all works too.
Ms. Temple?
Um, I too had an opportunity to attend the community meeting and it seemed to me from the discussion that um, people liked the um, option five. Um, as, um, so I think it's good. I, I myself have worked with uh, when two schools had to emerge, Academic Magazine and School of the Arts. And I think that from my discussions with um, staff, that they understand the importance of getting those two faculties working together, parents working together, um, planning together. So I just want to emphasize that that's, that's really important to begin building those relationships um, with each other. Um, I don't see, please confirm, I, I don't see because of the configuration that we should um, have any loss of teachers um, by combining those um, schools. I would, I would hope not. Um, if, if that's, if that's an issue, we need to um, think about that. And, oh, um, the question I, I have is, I was looking at the data and how the enrollment looked like through the years, it would not be as high as, as it's been now. Do, do you have an understanding of why those projections might show a decrease?
Uh, the, the only one that I can pinpoint that doesn't necessarily have an impact on the Honey Park uh, Lambs portion, uh, Dr. Temple, is Goodwin. And Goodwin's numbers over the years have dropped because of the rezoning with Meeting Street. So their numbers, a lot of their decrease was just natural attrition based on the students being moved in that, in that direction uh, over the, over the course of time in the past. Other, other than that, that's the only real anomaly uh, that, that was there from past, uh, past numbers.
So the other thing I was thinking of is that when these um, two new schools are built, um, you know, we tend as humans to like the newest, shiniest, shiniest, best um, thing going. So do you feel that with the building that you have, that should Goodwin parents um, decide that they would like to have their children at these new facilities? Would they be able to be there or would you always have to maintain Goodwin?
Uh, at, at this point, we wouldn't have capacity to roll Goodwin in. Uh, students can certainly apply for a, a transfer uh, with parents providing uh, transportation. Uh, and I'll just point out, and it's a, it's a, uh, it's a real good point to bring up, Dr. Temple. I, I will say that in, in my experience and looking at the past, uh, although we think that would be the case, uh, build it and they will come doesn't always happen. Um, and we've seen that in, in a number of schools as well, the, uh, it just didn't have the effect. And I, and I really sense that uh, from the discussions with the Goodwin uh, families and faculty. Um, I, I really think because of the proximity of those families to that school, um, I, I think that they're going to generally want to, want to stay uh, at that school. Um, and we just need to make sure that uh, we take, uh, and we'll come forward in January with um, taking the revenues that we would have needed for the three schools and making sure that for the next five years, we uh, account for any capital maintenance needs that we didn't have programmed at Goodwin. And also look at if there's any improvements that could be made uh, to the space that's there now so that it, it is something that can be sustained uh, over the next twenty to thirty years.
Well, I know Goodwin has a good spirit about it and um, they enjoy um, their students and have a lot of camaraderie with each other. So I think that's, that's good. Um, I don't have any further questions.
Good, thank you. Okay.
I'm sorry, I have two really quick questions. So will the two schools, will they be under one banner with one set of numbers?
It'll be two separate schools. And along those same lines, Mr. Calhoun, we'll look at establishing a naming committee to see if the group wants to maintain the two names or if they want to have different names. But it'll be two separate schools as far as reporting purposes.
Two sets of numbers.
Right. Two sets of numbers. Yes, sir.
All right, cool. And then second, so how would that, so you were just talking about with the nurses with the uh, one and one. How would that work with? They, they're still going to have their one and one?
We, we would analyze what the best solution is to meet the needs of the school. So we have.
At some points we'll merge numbers, but other points as far as the.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yes, sir. But the, the different things would have to be worked through. As an example, when you look at, at P E, if we have the common multipurpose room, we'll have to look with the two schools to see, does it make sense for each of them to have uh, their own teacher? Or is it a combined uh, program? We, we can walk through that with the, with the, with the learning leaders.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and um, I would just like to share that I was at, I think, all of the meetings. And I took a considerable amount of notes, but I'm trying my best to consolidate everything that I wrote. Um, I, I actually enjoyed um, all of the presentations, the, the, the community, the parent um, comments and input. It was, it was very good. I believe that the district heard all of the voices of the families in the community. And especially with the, the brand new school being equipped with better students. And um, the facility will be totally accessible. And the bus and transportation issues, it will be um, the study, the traffic study that was done, um, their capabilities for bus and um, car transportation is, it will be doubled. So they'll have less traffic or less traffic flow, but it will move efficiently through the new facility, correct, Mr. Brody?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and um, the staffing issue, um, it was said that the staff will end up at a school near, near them or at the new school and H R will be working with staff to make sure everyone is placed so no one will lose a job. Um, and the student experience overall, it will be a better experience for students and teachers. Allocations will stay the same, but they will also acquire special areas like art, music, P E and um, other opportunities that will be afforded to them because of the, of the new school system.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then um, field trips, school, um, school will work it out with administration so that if they have field trips for whichever grade level, they'll be able to have the buses and transportation that's needed and the funding. Okay, and um, let's see. Um, when will the process begin with the naming committees? Because um, teachers, the school, community and the parents will be able afforded that opportunity to rename the facility if, if possible.
Yes, ma'am. Well, right now we're in the process of the D nine elementary school naming committee. Uh, communications has, has begun that process and, and this one will follow.
Okay.
While we're on that topic, I, I just have one thought. Um, I would really love to see the kids form a committee and, and collaborate on names. I think they would really enjoy that.
The current process is in board policy. So we'll also take a look to see if that would be a lot, we'd allow that flexibility within what you all have on the books right now.
Okay, and my, um, my last question was Goodwin. Will we have enough money in this budget for the new school and to put all of the new renovations for Goodwin into place?
So ma'am, it depends upon what the definition of new renovations includes. So that's why I don't have that number to present to you today. I know for a fact that the capital maintenance needs, those are the individual building systems. We've got the funding for the next five years that was not programmed. So right now there are two projects that would have to be done in five years. One is a replacement of the roof and one is replacement of the doors and hardware. Uh, the funds from this capital construction project will easily cover that. Any other additions or changes to the building uh, with the complex, we need to work through to see what those needs are.
Okay, all right, that was my question. Um, anybody else? So with that being said.
Carlotta, just one more thing. I, I was, when I heard, and I hope that staff will think about this, it's always about the allocations. I was thinking when I heard something about, well, we'd look at one P E teacher, you know, or teachers for the two different schools, we're going to have to really recognize here that these are, these two schools have different grade levels. So, so the programs in the two through five school, the teachers may not be certified or qualified to work with early childhood. So I would hope that we, you know, look at the allocations realistically with where the, you know, what the children's needs are. And um, you know, it may be that with two separate buildings, you know, we need two full-time nurses, not a point six. I, I get a little frustrated with some of this point stuff. Um, so I hope we can kind of move in a direction where we really look at, you know, what's needed and what's efficient and, and what's really helpful and, and age appropriate.
We'll make sure to do that, Dr. Temple. Thank you for that. Because you're right, there is an early childhood certification, pre-grade through grade three, and then elementary two through six. And it does work collaboratively with H R to make sure students are well-served. So, so Ms. Bailey, before we move on, if I could just indulge the board a moment. I, I want to publicly thank Ms. Rowan and Ms. Shaw. Um, it's a rare occasion that you find a C O O who actually knows what um, panorama data is and what student and, I'm about to make some, well, I'll stop. Miss uh, Mr. Broe uh, comes to us frequently. He knows the attrition, the retention data at every school. He knows student achievement data. He knows what their student or school report card has looked like. And I know Ms. Shaw is right there alongside of him. And when asked by the board, certainly we serve at the will of the board, so whatever you ask us to do in regards to this is what, what we will do. But uh, Mr. Broe in good faith and with a big heart and Ms. Shaw have gone back and met with stakeholders multiple times. I think if he calls me one more time and says, can I schedule one more meeting? You know, I like, yes, Mr. Broe, if you have another hour in your day. He's met with the principals again. He's um, met with groups of teachers. And so I really want to thank him for the extra efforts and Ms. Shaw and the heart um, for, for what they've done, particularly in regards to this project, because it's been no easy feat. So, Ms. Rowan, thank you. Ms. Shaw, thank you.
Yes, and I just want to say they did an excellent job. Uh, e- each meeting that I went to, they did an outstanding job to make sure that the community and the parents and the staff understood exactly what was going on. So with that being said, my last question is if we wait to move this project forward, how much will the cost of building materials, construction and everything else that would entail this project, how much would it go up?
I never like to answer a question with a question, uh, how, how long am I waiting? You know, I, obviously we, we see escalation cost um, occurring in, in the business. So every, at this point, the way it's rolling every day, we, we do wait on the approval uh, does cost us additional resources. This, you know, even right now, uh, we've, we are facing a delay from what was originally planned. And, and, and it's all, I think, all for the good. Uh, we'd intended to open the school uh, in twenty twenty-six with the Early Ed Center in twenty twenty-seven. Now we're looking at both schools in twenty twenty-seven. Uh, we believe the money budgeted will cover us for those inflationary matters, but uh, we really want to get on with the design. So we'd very much uh, appreciate a, a board approval this month uh, as we move forward.
Thank you. With no other questions, uh, is there a motion to advance to the November thirteen, twenty twenty-three board agenda for consideration to approve the con- consolidation of Lambs and Honey Park Elementary?
I assume.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Watley, seconded by Ms. McKinney. May everyone please make sure that the motion you're reading is what you considered and make your vote. And the motion passes. Moving on to the next item, three D, cursive handwriting update.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bailey. This is a super, super brief um, update just for the purpose of making sure the board is aware regarding brand new twenty twenty-three E L A standards, handwriting standards. Um, there's a progression, there's a handwriting progression beginning in kindergarten that talks about um, print, pencil grasp, letter formation, legibility at kindergarten. And it progresses to printing uppercase, lowercase at grades one and two. But at grade three, there is an introduction of cursive handwriting. And so Susan Rawlings is the interim director for literacy. She has a plan uh, along with the instructional specialists who support her work to, for these brand new standards that are rolling out as we speak to provide training. During this school year and our standards explicitly highlight the cursive handwriting and handwriting standards generally. And then to make sure that we are working alongside our associates, associate superintendents to ensure that our administrators are aware of this new segment of the standards as well as communicating with our textbook coordinators. They are key in ensuring that we have the materials and the resources to support uh, this handwriting and cursive writing um, initiative as well as providing piece and guides that will include the guidance of handwriting K two manuscript and three through five cursive handwriting. But that was just for your information, so you are aware, that we are aware that we have cursive standards embedded in these brand new twenty-three E L A standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I want to thank um, the district when I, when I brought this up um, to um, let us know that you were on top of it. It made me proud, didn't surprise me. And we kept it on the agenda uh, as an update. It um, changed from action to information. And we did that because I had reached out to each of the trustees um, asking them um, if they could support this. So I thank you for informing all of us.
Any other questions?
I, I just want to make a comment. Um, over the last several years, um, through various different mediums, I've seen um, cursive handwriting going away and there being outcry and um, it is, it is some people that I know that work in like the realm of psychology and everything um, have expressed the importance of having cursive handwriting for brain development and things. So I was very relieved and, and pleased to find out that C C S D is implementing cursive handwriting. So thank you for bringing this forward and um, updating us on it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Temple, do you have anything?
Yes, um, well, I have mixed opinion about cursive writing because I'm one of those people that prints and, and uses cursive intertwined. So anyway, um, I use cursive if it's easier to write that letter and I print the others. So um, and, and I'd be real happy if kids were learning shorthand because that would be really good for taking notes. But anyway, I know kids are doing a lot with keyboarding. But one of the, the couple of things I had was, um, have you all thought about, you know, how much time is it going to take to teach cursive writing? And how is, how is that going to fit into the, you know, the day? Because I, I get real. Uh, I get real concerned when I see that students and schools don't have enough time for their science and social studies. So I'd like to know what you've thought about that. And then because I'm speaking from Zoom, the second question I I have. And and maybe just, I'm just planting it as a a seed. Um, when I visited the Montessori school. On James Island, Murray Lusane, I asked, was asking question, you know, do you teach cursive writing um, at Montessori? And I learned that um, that in some of the Montessori programs, they begin teaching cursive first. And that they thought it was really good for dyslexic students. So I just planting this seed is. You know, you all are the experts. Maybe you can check it out and see whether. You know, if a student is early on identified as having um, dyslexia. That maybe they could learn cursive earlier than than third grade. So I I don't know. You you all are the experts. And that's just something that I heard.
Thank you for that, Dr. Temple. So in terms of this time restraint, that's a real dilemma for us. To have the time to dedicate to all of the standards that have to be taught. But for handwriting particularly, it's embedded. It's layered in with the teaching of spelling, for example, or the teaching of vocabulary, or the teaching of writing in terms of composition. And being able to draft a comprehensive cohesive paper. And so it's not done in isolation. It's done in tandem and concert as a part of our overall spelling and vocabulary strategy. Um, it it goes hand in hand. But I did not know that information about the Montessori uh, teaching uh, cursive first. And so that's. Information for me to seek more knowledge about. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? If no other questions, I will hand it over to Audit and Finance. Oh.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is one of those perfect storm months in which we have a COW meeting. And then tomorrow, we're having our Audit Finance meeting. And then a week later, we have a board meeting. So as you see on the action items and the information items in executive session. This still has to be discussed at Audit and Finance tomorrow. Um, I will let you know that there were a couple of items that. We moved into information rather than action items, because I would ask the board. To kind of look at it. And then after tomorrow's discussion, you may want to move them to action items. And it, I just felt that there was some information here that is new, that everybody hasn't had a chance to really look at it. And that you you may have some questions, so you may want to leave it as information items, and then we'll address it in December. Uh, the two ones that I bring up with is definitely the FOIA charges. And we all know that we should be. Probably increasing that, but you know, as to the numbers, you know, once again, once we talk about it at Audit and Finance tomorrow. You know, this can easily, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Carla, we can move this over at some point if the board were to. Call and say that they'd like to see it as an action item on the board meeting, we could easily move this over after tomorrow's meeting.
I would honestly have to check with someone, because we've listed it as an information item. I don't know if it could automatically go as an action item with the board or not. I mean, I need to check with someone.
No, it needs to wait till.
We'd have to change on the adoption. Okay.
I actually believe, Mr. Grabowski, it came for information, because I think the policy is that. The the district determines the charges. And so we, we're putting forth a proposal tomorrow in Audit Finance for you all to review. And give us feedback on, of course, we're very, very much open to whatever suggestions you have. But um, we we know the intent.
So it's not, so it's not to micromanage. Uh, we don't want to go down that level.
Yes, sir, but.
That's fine.
Feedback.
Uh, and and the other one was um. On the constituent board pay, which I think has to go up to the state if I'm not right, correct about that one. So. There may, we, it's definitely something we want to consider. Some options were given. And we, we just felt that that was one of the ones we felt that Audit and Finance needed to talk about a little more. And probably the board needs to talk about a little more before, you know, rushing into it as an action item. The rest of them are pretty much self-explanatory.
Yes, sir, Mr. Grabowski, Ms. Carlin's team has done an excellent job putting together, I think, three or four recommendations to the board. So that you understand the total budget impact um. Per, per meeting cost, uh, the options of technology, uh, per diems for food, et cetera. So certainly you can discuss that and let us know what your will is there.
And last but not least, um, I did have an opportunity to spend a couple wonderful hours with the auditors. And Ms. Carlin, you know, they speak very highly of you and your staff. And they're very happy with the new procurement office, so it'll be a really great subject to talk with. I will correct something with uh, that I said earlier to Mr. Kennedy. He is right. I mean, we have out, like, we have allocated funds from the general use funds. We will talk about this tomorrow with the auditors as to whether it is a recommended action. So I I do stand corrected by that, Mr. Kennedy. Um, so. That will be one of the things, because obviously they look back and not forwards. We have to rely on staff more as to projections, but. There'll be a full report to the board by the auditors on Monday. That's it. Uh, I see we have the lobbyist funding.
Are there gonna, are there any questions allowed on the Audit and Finance piece?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I'll open it up for discussion. Uh, I would, did one, what about this section here that says executive session?
Once again, they'll be handled at um, Audit and Finance. So it's like. What comes first, the chicken or the egg? Uh. I mean, we really need to have the Audit and Finance Committee meeting on all of these items.
Yep. So can I ask my question?
You're gonna open discussion?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, can we just change on the um, agenda where it says these items were discussed? And just say these items will be discussed just for the clarification of the public, so they don't think that. We actually took up these items or were able to consider anything during this meeting.
I I have no problem with that.
It says it on, in the background. Sorry, not the agenda, but the background. Uh, and I didn't notice it when we were. Voting on the agenda, but it, that probably should be corrected.
We're happy to make that adjustment, um, uh, Ms.
I think we'll have to make a um, take a vote on that. Well, um, Ms. Guthrie, we have to um, make a vote on that as far as the um. The background on the public content. So the way it reads as, as of now is the following items were received at the November Audit and Finance Committee, which has not happened, it won't happen tomorrow. And um, meeting will be submitted. We don't know if they will be submitted, but they haven't been voted on yet. So this should have actually been changed in the adoption of the agenda for the background. Do we need to take a vote to get that background changed? No. That's fine. Alright.
We'll make, we'll be glad to make the adjustment, Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. The only other issue I see is that we have on for topic of discussion with Audit and Finance is the lobbyist support. So I was kind of surprised when I saw the lobbyist's funding for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I didn't understand where that came from.
That was, yes, and I can comment to that. That um, was originally, excuse me, an action item. And when we had the agenda meeting, uh, Ms. Huggins and Mr. Kennedy clarified how about that does not exist anymore. But we decided to keep it as an information item since I had contacted each trustee about it. Um, and if you'd like further explanation, um, Mr. Kennedy or Ms. Huggins can tell you or I can.
I I certainly defer to Mr. Kennedy.
So what was discussed when we reviewed the um, the agenda for the committee of the whole uh, meeting. Uh, on this item, uh, I presented the um, I guess a historical perspective. Uh, so when, when, when this board was um. Came into play last November, it would have been after the normal process of engage, of a board, of the school board engagement with the legislative. Delegation for the upcoming legislative session. So typically what has happened for a number of years. Is that uh, staff in conjunction with the board would take a look at items that we would like for the legislators to consider. During the legislative process. So that, I think I gave like three examples. One was uh, uh, the board, I mean, the state is looking at. Um, increasing teacher salaries up to some threshold, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we know that the funding mechanism for education. Um. Results in C C S Ds not receiving the full amount of that uh, from the state in terms of revenue. So that might be something that uh, the board would like to engage with the legislative delegation on through the um. Uh, through a lobbyist. Another example, this afternoon, uh, we talked extensively of. Uh, the academic team talked extensively about the mental health services and the costs associated with that. Well, we know that the governor had established a task force looking at that statewide. Um, and the assumption is that there will be some funding associated with that. Again, uh, because of the education funding formulas. Will we be uh, required to take a bigger share than other school districts? And the last piece I will uh, give an example, we know that Superintendent Weaver, uh, one of her objectives is to take a look at. High dosage tutoring across the state. Uh, when she did that with letters training, uh, she was able to get the legislators to fund some of that. Uh, we had already uh, funded locally, uh, letters training. So. Do we want to make sure that if there's going to be funding for uh, tutoring across the state, our legislators are aware of that? And so what typically happens then in the past, then that, again, board and staff weigh in on those types of potential items. And then uh, there's a meeting with the legislative delegation in the fall. So that uh, they can make sure that they understand what the the district's positions are, is on particular areas. And then we engage with the lobbyists to make sure that that lobbyist uh, engages with the legislators during that legislative process. Uh, and and as I told the uh. Uh, Ms. McKinney, I think, and uh, and um, Ms. Watley, Ms. Bailey. Uh, my explanation is not lobbying for a lobbyist. I'm just giving you the uh, the historical perspective of how, why we used to, used one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kennedy. Um, Mr. Grabowski, did you want to ask any, to open, does anybody have any questions before we move on?
If anyone, if any of the board members have any questions, Mr. Doc, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and um, move on to the.
Well, I don't have a, I don't have a question, but I do have an opinion. And that is that um. When it was approached to me, um, a question about this is, um. I think it's important that we have a line item that would support a lobbyist, but I also feel that. Um, it needs to be, you know, really directed. I didn't think, to be honest with you, I didn't think that. Um, the firm that we had present to us was information we already knew, because the School Boards Association. Presents a lot of really good information, um, ongoing reports. I, I mean, I found them incredibly uh, informative. But I do think that we need to maintain a line item so that when there is some, some question that we need. To have happen, either with the State Department or with our legislature, that we have someone who is skilled. In communicating um, with those people, with those people, because I know that with the education funding coming. Um, Charleston, we. The funding is supposed to be supporting teachers and the district is supposed to be picking up more money. And so. I think we're gonna have some issues where we, where we do need to lobby and and make our case for um. You know, what legislation is coming down the line. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Any, I I, I I guess I'll dovetail on what Dr. Temple's saying. Um, Ms. Huggins, isn't that what Ms. Clara? I'm gonna mess up her last name. Isn't it, isn't, isn't she our liaison to the delegation?
Uh, Mr. Kennedy, I saw you raise your hand. Go ahead.
Uh, so a couple of points to Ms. Uh, to Dr. Temple's point. So. The lobbyists uh, will, uh, did come here and do, give a summary briefing to the school board. Uh, however, uh, different departments within the district, staff, staff. Uh, engages with the lobbyists on an ongoing basis during the legislative process. There's a lot of complex bills that get proposed. And so uh, each bill gets, there's an analysis of each bill that's done primarily by the finance team. To see what the im fiscal impact is going to be to the district. So the finance team is back and forth and back and forth with the lobbyists to make sure that. We understand uh, the impacts to us so that the legislators understand that. And so that's the lobbyist that's in Columbia that that's engaging on a, on a uh, daily basis. With all the legislators and all this um, legislative staff on the proposed bills that are coming, that are being put forth. And then with Ms. uh, Heinzen here locally, uh, she has the relationships with our local delegation so that she can make sure. That from a uh, local standpoint, uh, there's this back and forth with the, either staff and or with the board. So that's how, how, how the two um, different types of lobbyists have been used here in the district.
Yes, Rover. So. Uh, Dr. Temple, if you don't mind, Ms. Robertson hasn't had a moment yet.
So how many lobbyists do we currently have on staff?
On staff? Well, we don't have any on staff. We need our contract, you know. Yeah, so we, okay, so uh, uh, we have one. Local, that's part-time. And then we have the Campbell cons- uh, consulting firm in Columbia, so two.
Okay, um, is there like a policy that we have in place or some guidelines? Um, do they report to us um, monthly, quarterly, yearly? Do we request it? Do you request it? How do we get information from the lobbyists?
Well, so, again, the, the, the information flow is uh, two ways. One, uh, is a summary briefing. Uh, to the board generally during the legislative process, I would say monthly, um, at the board meeting or the committee of the whole. So. Again, there's summary information about what's going on legislatively. Uh, and then uh, on an ongoing basis, it could be. In, in, in any given week, it could be daily, uh, where staff is engaging with the uh, lobbyists in Columbia. To make sure that as the bills, the proposed bills are coming forward, uh, we have understanding what those bills are. Uh, what the um, fiscal impact will be to the district. And so uh, that's, that's, that's again, as, as needed. As needed, that type of uh, uh, back and forth with the staff. And then. As I indicated a few minutes ago, at some point before the legislative uh, session starts, in the, uh, in. It's been in the, in the fall, October, November timeframe, is when the board and uh, staff actually meet. Uh, with uh, the local legislative delegation so that we can brief them on what uh, what's happening in the district. Uh, they can give us their opinions and they can certainly understand what uh, our uh, priorities are.
Okay, so um, so it sounds like the lobbyists spend more time with staff than the board.
Almost definitely.
Okay, um. Our last breakfast with the delegation was canceled with no explanation. And I guess that would have been our opportunity as a board to have face time with them. Is that something that um. Is going to be rescheduled?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Delia and her team are working with Ben Young now in the legislative delegation to reschedule that. Yes, ma'am.
And I believe we have in our local delegation, two or three of those representatives on the Education Committee in Columbia. Yes, ma'am. Ms. McKinney.
So I am totally confused. I thought when I.
You're, Mr. Kennedy is. Mr. Kennedy wasn't aware that contract with Campbell, when we met um, to for Board Agenda Review. Um, the contract with Campbell Consulting Group um, was not executed. So we, Ms. Heinzen is currently working with us.
Okay.
Um, with the local delegation um, on a part-time basis. But. The co- the contract with the Campbell Consulting Group was uh, in the process of being discussed with, with Dr. Galian.
Okay, so do we currently have a contract with the Campbell Group?
We do, we do not.
Thank you.
So all of my comments were from a historical perspective, perspective, what we've done in the past.
Thank you. I I was just trying to separate history from present. Thank you.
Thank you for asking clarification, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you for that explanation.
Mr. Grabowski, did you still want?
I, I think this really goes to Ms. Robertson and as to the School Board Association, you know, representative as to. Are, are we having duplicative coverage here, um, considering what you know the services they provide?
I, I would say no, um, only because the School Board Association, um, they do represent us and they provide us with legislative update. They, they, we can call on them, but they may not be able to um, represent us all the time with our specific needs. So um, I think with the district of our size, we probably do need to, as Dr. Temple said, at least have a line item. For a lobbyist. Um, and if uh, we have one that's part-time, um, I think that would serve us well. Um, as a, as a district, so that staff will have um, the opportunity to use that lobbyist for things that they need that we may not. I did speak with the CEO of the School Board Association. And they recommend for a district our size that we should have somebody when they're not available. Not that they won't be available, but there could be some specific concerns that we have that they may not be able to get right to it. So we will have our own lobbyists.
Ms. Robertson, if you'd be willing, maybe you could meet with and talk to us a little bit more about, I heard your question about how often perhaps we should inform the board, how often we should work with the board. So staff member, I'll reach out at the end of coming days, if that's okay, to just connect on your recommendations if that's.
Okay. Courtney, is your hand raised?
It is. I have, yeah. So one of the, so I heard, and it was a little choppy for me, but I heard you say, Ms. Huggins, that the contract with Campbell and Associates is not active right now. And so given that the only reason it's not active is that it, it died on the floor with Dr. Galyon, when Dr. Galyon was thrown paid administrative leave, what is the status now with the services? And with ensuring that we have not just any old firm, but continuity. And I guess, I guess the broader question is maybe for the board. So that question's for you, but then for whoever originated this, what was the purpose here? Is the intent not to have a lobbyist or to have a lobbyist? I don't really understand what is the purpose of the discussion. And I think, so I think there's, I have two questions. Is one, are we going to continue to have one for the district? Because based on what Mr. Kennedy laid out, it sounds like there's actually a lot of work that occurs between the district staff and the lobbyists. That's needed, that actually has nothing to do with the School Boards Association. And then the second question would be, why would we be considering a new firm? Is the current firm not serving the needs? So what was the basis of this conversation?
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mrs. Waters. And so we, we currently do have a, a contract in hand for the Campbell Consulting Group, but it's pending. It hasn't been signed, as you, as you well noted. In regards to this agenda item, Ms. McKinney stepped out for a moment. I don't know whether Mr. Grabowski or any of the other originators might have more details on, on it. Or if we maybe we should wait on Mrs. McKinney.
I think this was just, you know, for information purposes, because there was a, you know, needed to this South Carolina School Board Association and as to the historical as Mr. Kennedy brought up. And I think that's why it was put out as an information item. But I, I do hear from what I hear, Mr. Kennedy saying that this really is a staff issue because it's a staff resource.
Thank you, Ms. Grabowski.
Yeah. Yeah. And I just want to, I just want to note that in October, which was, was last month. And, and now of course is when, you know, pre-filing is occurring. So if we're, if we don't have somebody and there is a list of things we need to be engaging on, we're, we're, we're going to get to a point of being behind the eight ball on this.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Waters.
Dr. Temple, you wanted one more question?
Yeah. And, and I just wanted to make a comment that I think we need to reschedule our, our breakfast with the legislative delegation. And that when we do meet, we should be really informed from staff if they have any alerts of things that we as individual board members can lobby. I mean, because we as board members do know a lot of our own legislators and can talk with them and help, you know, give them rationale. So I think it'd be really important to get feedback from staff as to, you know, some things that we're going to need them to pay attention to, to support our schools.
We really, really appreciate that, Dr. Temple. It was a conversation we had in cabinet. I know the board certainly don't want any additional meetings, but if we might and, and sometime even small groups to dialogue and exchange with you about what priorities we have, what, what we see as priorities from a funding and equity lens, you know, in regards to the academic program for the coming year, the wraparound supports for the coming year. So that when you engage with your fellow elected officials, you might do so from, from an informed perspective, we would be incredibly grateful. So I'll, maybe I can work with Mrs. Robertson on that, Chair McKinney, Mrs. Watley. And, and we can have a discussion about how that best occurs. Sorry, Mr. Calhoun.
I think that sounds like a great idea. Oh.
Yeah. So, so, so we can move forward. I will say, everybody knows I like to look at comparables, particularly comparable with school districts. Greenville has an entire advocacy committee that they put together. And then they meet with the lobbyists and then they bring that back to the board and they put out their board resolutions. They put out the education bills, the board requests. So maybe we should look at, because we are the closest to them, should think about putting together an entire advocacy committee. So.
And so with that, let's go ahead and move on to, and I also like the idea of committees. Items five A, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kelly.
So the Health Advisory Committee bylaws is one we've discussed as a, as a board and number of different times. But this one is a little different in that we've brought clarity to the tenure of all members. The original bylaws had ambiguous or, or unclear language. And so I met with district staff as well as legal counsel to, to bring clarity to what we think is the initial intent of the writer of the bylaws in regard to the Health Advisory Committee terms, uh, terms of office. As well as there's a change in regard to the absence policy previously that, and from memory, so forgive this, but I believe it was if there were three meetings missed in a given year, that the, the Health Advisory Committee as a group could, or maybe it was the chairman could send a letter to the board asking for a replacement of that individual. However, this committee meets four times total in a year. So I think it's prudent that if somebody has missed 75% of their duty, that, that they be replaced with someone who actually can perform their duty. As well as there's some grammatical and spelling changes. And then the, the other change is the updated policy liaison versus policy and personnel committee language. Because the Personnel and Policy Committee was disbanded a while ago. So it's, and it was replaced with the Policy Liaison. So that was just an out of date language.
Is that it? We open for questions?
No.
Absolutely. Yeah, certainly. I, I'm sorry. Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Calhoun, do you have something to say, sir?
Right. So who on the staff did you meet with?
Oh, Ms. Huggins, who all was on that call? I know it was yourself, Mr. Johnson. I, I don't recall all, everybody.
And Mr. Breitling was on that call.
What about the staff?
Yeah.
So the staff member who's over the Health Advisory Committee wasn't on the call?
Oh, there's some.
No?
I beg your pardon?
The staff member who was over was a Ms. Coop?
Holly Cut.
Yeah, Holly Cut. Was Holly Cut on the call?
I don't believe so, no.
Was she invited to be on the call?
I don't believe so. I, I'm actually not certain. I don't, I don't know.
Has the Health Advisory Committee actually looked at this? Were they advised with this? Were they part of the plan for this?
Yeah, they, they were advised, absolutely. But the Health Advisory Committee by, by the, by the previous bylaws don't have a say in the bylaw update. That responsibility lies exclusively with the Board of Trustees.
I understand that, but working in good faith with the committee that volunteers, we should work with them, especially if we're doing something that's going to affect them. So did we eventually give them any type of, hey, let's have a meeting so we can talk about this?
So the, as you're well aware, there's some ambiguity right now as to what the proper makeup of the Health Advisory Committee is. So it's difficult to hold a, a working session with that, with the, that group of people or that, that a few different groups of people.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. What is the ambiguity to it? We know that because of the last, what happened before that it reverted back to what it was before September 25th. So where is the ambiguity with it? We know who they were on, on or before September 25th.
Oh, there's no, there's no ambiguity about who it was before the 25th. What I'm saying is it's difficult to go back and work through a, a bylaw update with a group of people who have, who filed suit against the very district they volunteer for.
So it's a personal problem?
No. Personal problem?
So this is a personal problem?
Well, I, I suppose they, they did sue the district. So yeah, perhaps they have a problem with the district. I'm not sure. You'd have to talk to the folks who sued us about that. That's all I have. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Waters, did you have anything to add?
Yes, I do. So one, I find the timing of this inappropriate. If there's any level of ambiguity around who's on the committee and who's not on the committee, we shouldn't be changing the bylaws without the committee. I think that changing it to make it okay to limit the terms is very disingenuous. We know that that was the community issue that came before us recently. And so moving the goal or not, we acted, yes, lady can, well, is really disingenuous. And I think it's very disrespectful to the public outcry that came from this. I certainly think the same with regard to the members. And I think that whether those members chose to, you know, chose to take action and, or, you know, whatever is happening in the midst of this, we have to be very objective about our policies. And I haven't understood any clear reason why we need to limit or be allowed to limit at will the terms of any person on the Health Advisor Committee. There's no data that suggests that needed to happen. It was just your insistence that it happened in this instance. So I won't be supporting these changes. And I think we need to, we need to send this back to committee and think critically about how we're responding to the input that we receive from the community, because I don't believe this is the way to do it.
Thank you for your input. And to, to be clear, we are making more clear the ambiguous language of the bylaws. We're not adding a new, new clause in that way.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, I'd like to respond because we are, we are not making more clear. The bylaws actually could have gone either way. The bylaws actually said that folks get to serve a term. It then said they serve at the pleasure of the board. If we are clarifying it and we're making this the clarification, we're choosing a way to go. We're not simply clarifying, we're actually deciding the new way in which we will operate. And again, I believe that's disingenuous and I don't like to step over things with that sort of light language. I like to be very clear about the fact that a choice is being made here.
Ms. Bailey, do you have anything to add? Ms. Watley?
I don't.
McKinney? Ms. Robertson?
Yeah, I do have a question. Let me make my comment first. I'm looking at this section that's titled bylaws. And the last sentence says, the policy and personnel committee may also periodically review the bylaws with the hack chairperson and may recommend changes to the board. So the question still remains, did, was the hack chairperson involved in these changes, these recommended changes? And if not, then I think we, again, we are being presumptuous. And so then I ask Ms. Gut I think, this is different. This is not a policy change. This is a bylaws change. And I think that we have to, we look at this differently when it comes to voting. We need a two-thirds majority to change a bylaws. And that's, I believe that's in this, this committee. Okay.
No, this is not legal to. Okay. From a parliamentary procedure perspective, precedence for the hack bylaws is a majority vote because they are not bylaws of the board. So it is more of a committee report. So to make these changes en masse would be a majority vote.
Okay. It is my understanding that the hack committee, when they make their bylaw changes, that it's written in the bylaws, that they need a two-third votes.
Bylaw, the, the hack does not have the authority to change their own bylaws.
No, they, they make recommendation and that's the point. You're absolutely right. They are make, they make recommendations to us, but they have not been a part of this process. So how could they make a recommendation to change anything when we, we are taking that away from them? I just think that we need to step back off of this. But this is fine. And let's do it the right way. I know there's a lawsuit. There's a lot going on, but we don't need to continue to make this worse. And I think if we do something tonight, we're making this worse. I, I don't, I, I just think we need to back off of this and so that we can find some common grounds. Maybe we need to get another group of people together that's not so close to this, so that we can work through this. But maybe tonight is not the time for us to continue down the same rabbit hole. We've done this for the last two months. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. It's been, it's been way too long that this has been pending. So it's certainly about time that we pull the trigger rather than wait. I, I would also point out that the board, the hack chairperson did review this initially back in, goodness, April, I think it was. With at least a majority of the changes in here. The two that are new, maybe it's one that is new, or the two that are new is the absence portion and the, like I said earlier, the clarification to the original policy, making the clarifying that all hack members are at will versus on a term, which is again, I defer to Mr. Johnson on the, the legal portion of that, if there was more questions.
Do one last thing, Mr. Kelly. If we don't, if we don't pull the trigger tonight, what will it hurt?
Was there more to that? Was there more to that?
No, what, what would it hurt? You?
The Health Advisory Committee, as we were informed, it has been delayed. I believe they were supposed to start meeting in August. We're now in November. So further delay cannot possibly be helpful.
So can we not go back to the original bylaws so that they can meet?
The Health Advisory Committee as a committee that serves at the pleasure of this board does not have any authority over the bylaws. So there, there's no purpose for them to meet to discuss the bylaws.
No, not to discuss the bylaws, but to meet as a group so that they can take care of the business of the Health Advisory Committee. I think that this came out of nowhere. It was not necessary. And so something that came out of changing some, making grammatical errors have turned into a lawsuit. And all I'm asking is that this board just back off of it so that we can get some clarity to this. So let's just, you know, lay this on the table. Let's get through all of these things that we've created before we move on. Because anything that we do tonight, that's against the original bylaws, we're just going to create more hate and discontent. And I don't think that that's our purpose.
I have to agree with Ms. Waters in one sense. I think all we're doing is, you know, saying this is, we're going for clarity and we're defining what at the pleasure of the board is. So I, I do have to agree with her that, you know, there is no ambiguity in the way these proposals are set. I think you also have to look at section 593230. I mean, we can't advocate any of this to the hack committee. This is our responsibility. So just pushing through the bylaws is what we're responsible for. So when a liaison. So when a liaison brings up, we should debate those issues, see if those issues are represented, whether it has any effect on this litigation. I don't know. I mean, I don't think so. But that's not my, you know, role. My role as a board member, my role member is, as a board member is to follow 593230. And if you read this very clearly, we are not to advocate this, you know, to the hack committee. This is our responsibility. We have the obligation to debate this, debate the changes. And I agree with Ms. Waters, it's, you know, it was either one or A or B, and we're going with B. So we debate B. Or A.
Dr. Temple, did you have anything to add to the discussion?
Well, yes. I mean, I've been following the Health Advisory Committee for 33 years. And the bylaws have worked fairly well for, um, for the, for the Health Advisory Committee, doing the work that is needed. And I, I felt that, uh, the last time we had a proposal for the bylaws, you know, we, we didn't have input from the Health Advisory Committee. And I think, I think we owe them the respect to get their perspective on, on the bylaws, that we're making bylaw changes that we don't even really know if, if that's, um, a problem. So I have a problem with us not having, um, a conversation with them. Um, and, and I have a pow, and I have a problem with, um, the po, a policy liaison, one person, it's not you, Ed, but it's like one person making a slate when in fact, you know, if we don't have that personnel committee, we need to look at, um, another committee that would, um, you know, take a look at these bylaws from multiple perspectives. Because one person's perspective is, um, not enough to affect, um, the extent of, of this, um, you know, change that, that we're looking at. So, um, and I think right now we could just put this on hold. I think at our next meeting, we need to get to the point where we, um, select people for the five openings we have and, you know, work on, uh, keeping people whose terms have not expired. And let's not upset the whole apple cart here. Um, and let's use some common sense. But I, I think that looking at, um, bylaws at this point is, is premature. We're not really sure that the changes are, are needed. And as I said before, I think, um, we, we, we can make, if we need to make some changes, let's, let's get some advice from people who've been working with these bylaws, um, to see what, what has worked well and, and what needs, um, changing. But I, I think it's premature to be, um, addressing the bylaws at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Temple.
You're welcome.
Mike? Yeah, this, my heart rate monitor just went up. As the parliamentarian, I too would like to be able to be consulted on these bylaws because there are two areas that I think there are problematic.
But we did consult with general counsel, uh, from a legal perspective. And I defer to Mr. Johnson or the district, uh, to talk about the, the legality of the, of the bylaw updates.
Are there, are there specific areas? I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the parliamentarian is referring to. If, if the question is, if the question regards, does this board have the authority or the power to change the bylaws? Yes, the board does. The second part of that question is, what are the policy implications of making changes at this point or at some later point? And that really is a question for the board. That's, that's not necessarily or not at all a legal question because the board has the, the authority and the power to, to make those changes to the bylaws. But, but there are policy implications that the board needs to discuss. And, uh, obviously there are some members who believe that it's not, that it's premature to have this discussion and that discussion should take place at some later time. But again, that, that is not a legal issue.
Great. And to add to that, Dr. Temple mentioned one of the, the issues that I noticed from a practical perspective in terms of administering the bylaws. And there's another one as well.
Did you have somebody to add, Mr. Calhoun?
I wanted to respond to Mr. Grabowski. It's not advocating to the, uh, Health Advisory Committee, but it's, again, getting the input from more than just one person or even the group or somebody who will actually be using these bylaws. Respect. Um, I, this, off top, just the respect of it. Um, secondly, I would like to say the, we don't need a bylaw change for them to meet, correct?
Right. They can meet now.
They can meet when they want. They, what, what is it, 24 or 48 hours? Is that correct?
So, so yes, sir, the, the meetings have to be noticed, um, just like board meetings. I was advised in, in full transparency, um, we received a request for them to meet. And I consulted with Ms., from, um, from Dr., from Dr. Cleveland, the chair. I consulted with Mrs. Guthridge and Mr. Johnson. And we made the recommendation and asked them to, to meet the Thursday following next Monday's board meeting. But for various, for various reasons. And, and Ms. Guthridge or Mr. Johnson can share those if the, the board would, would like those shares.
Yes, please.
Yes. So the, the meeting, the, the meeting of the health advisors.
Right. And so your question, I'm sorry, your question was?
So, so Ms., Mr. Calhoun asked if the Health Advisory Committee in its current state could, could meet. And I said that we had been consulted from Dr. Cle, asked from Dr. Cle, Cleveland if they could meet. And I consulted with you and Mr. Johnson on whether it would be appropriate for them to meet at this time. And the suggestion was, given the current, um, state of affairs with a pending, a pending lawsuit, the board taking up action, I'll just go ahead and, um, taking up action, the recommendation from both parties was that they meet the Thursday following next, next, um, Monday's meeting, which is the, the 16th. And so we've worked with Holly Cutt to make sure the agenda is ready. She's prepared to notice the meeting. Um, and I think she's had correspondence back and forth with some or all of the members, um, from my last recollection via email. So that was the position of, of the district after consulting with council.
Right. And as the parliamentarian, my sense was that was be a good time to wait. I did not know that there were going to be bylaws changes.
That's where, as I said, we're, we're in the same part, so we can tell them to do what they wanted to do. But then we are over here pushing something through on our end. That's where I see the disconnect. We're going to be pushing this through. They can be working. They could have been working. So instead of telling them to wait, at this point, I don't see why they just go, can't go ahead and meet now and actually get some work done. That's all I have.
Okay. Got the question? Oh, sure. Yeah.
And, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, what, what's missing is there's no debate on any of the changes. I mean, this is, this isn't an action item at the moment. I mean, this is just open debate on, you know, discussion about bylaws, which is definitely in, in our, you know, um, area of responsibility. I mean, audit and finance is a little different because we have a charter, which is within the, the, you know, within the policy. And I agree with Mr. Calhoun, we have taken on the role that we just, we worked with staff on making the changes, but we did work with our committee and get their opinions. But that's, that's an interesting committee because we are actual members on that committee towards Health and Advisory doesn't have a board committee. All they are is a committee that is making recommendations.
And we should work in the same good faith as a health, as a board with the Health Advisory Committee. I don't care if it's a committee, it can just be just the policy liaison saying, I'm about to change the policy. I want to change the bylaw. I want to do this. I want to do that. I want to work with the person, with the people who this is going to affect. If it's strategic education, they should be, she should, uh, nobody, I'm, I'm just saying she, because Ms. Bailey is the strategic education. She should not be trying to put anything forward without talking to the people it will affect. Talking to the district, talking to the staff, talking to the teachers, the, the early childhood. She should not be trying to put anything forward without talking to the, yes, she can do it because we, as a board, we can do whatever we want, so, so to say. But why would we do something in not good faith?
And, and, and I think this, this goes back to a lot of discussions that we've been having, Mr. Calhoun, myself and with other board members on, you know, how to move forward with developing some of these committees to where we actually have board membership, uh, involved, like in audit and finance, using that model. Um, because it definitely brings more ownership, more transparency, whatever. But this is, this is just for debate purposes only to, um, and what all I'm seeing in the bylaws, there's nothing that's stopping them from meeting tomorrow or the next week or the week after next. I mean, all we're doing is clarifying some of the, um, I mean, just more as to, you know, defining what is the pleasure of the board as I see it. And that's really what the debate should be about, is whether we want to agree to that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did. Um, or was someone else being called on?
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Um, I do want to clarify something. I know Mr. Grabowski made the point that we're not debating the issues that are, uh, the changes to the bylaws, but, but I want to restate that I am. In particular, I mean, of course, I, I, I just, the grammatical changes don't matter. I mean, if you want to clean up a grammatical error, that's one thing. But again, to change the way, the method of service and to change the way that these members can be eliminated or put in place is, is a huge problem. And, um, it, I want to build on my former statement about the fact that we need to be very focused and ensure that we are operating with objectivity. It's not just because it's good for us to do so. It's because this is an institution that will outlive all of us in our service on this board. It is an institution that was in existence before our service on this board. And again, if there was no signal that there was some sort of an issue with the way that the term limits were being honored before, why would we change them? And moving forward, if we continue to have these extremely politically polarized environments that are, that are conducting the work of this board, we could end up in a situation where those members are changing over way more frequently than they should, especially when they actually have responsibility for recommending curriculum and have responsibility for becoming a cohesive body that can work together and accomplish tasks. This board in and of itself is an example of the chaos that can occur when a board changes as rapidly as it does. And when, and when the focus is on splintered political beliefs rather than the work itself. The current makeup of the board, there was no signal that there was an issue in the operation of the board. And again, this is not about any person on, that's currently sitting in this seat's opinion about it. It, we should be considering historic data and what might occur in the future that benefits our students. It's not about personal opinions. We need to be objective when we approach any sort of policy change, bylaw change, any sort of entity that's going to make decisions that impact students every day.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Was there something else?
Yes. And if we're still debating, um, let me just say that this is problematic. This is one person, and Ms. Grabowski, you keep saying the pleasure of the board. I am a member of the board and this is not my pleasure. Um, so let me just say, again, we need to table this and we need to really, um, seriously create a policy ad hoc committee. And I'll go ahead and volunteer to be on that because this is one person that's bringing this forward. And I believe that if it's our responsibility, according to the section that you, um, quoted, that, that we could do whatever we want, then it should not be one person doing it, that we need to create a, a policy committee tonight so that now it could be more voices from the board. We've, we've been down this road too many times with one person changing policy. And this is where we're going to stay if we do not create a policy ad hoc committee.
You're here.
So just to, to bring clarity to that, uh, one person has not and cannot change board policy. The pleasure of the board represents the majority of the membership at, uh, at the time of voting. So.
One person is making recommendations versus sitting down with a group of people to come up with the recommendations to bring to the board. One person is making the recommendation that's coming forward instead of a committee making the recommendation to come forward to the board. The Audit and Finance Committee brings things to the board. Not Mr. Grabowski, not Mr. Calhoun. A committee brings things to, to us. You're the only person on, on the policy committee that's bringing things to us. I don't think that this is rocket science.
Dr. Temple, did you have something else to add?
Something new.
Mr. Kelly, why is this so important to you? Uh, that, that is the question that I, that I have. Why is this so important? Because this, these bylaws have worked well for 33 years. And, and this committee has worked well with our, our community. Um, they put forward a curriculum that is balanced. Parents can have a chance or choice of, of what aspects they want to have. So we, we haven't heard any complaints about the Health Advisory Committee. So why is it so important to you to be changing these bylaws and making these recommendations without, you know, have you met with the Health Advisory Committee? Have you met with the health person? I mean, what, why is this so important? To you personally? Seems like a personal thing.
Ms. McKinney had something.
Anything else, Dr. Temple?
No, but you didn't answer my question. We're debating. And I'd like to, I'd really like to know from your perspective, why is this so important to you?
I, I'm not going to play into the straw man argument, Dr. Temple. Ms. McKinney?
It's a question. It wasn't an argument. I would really like to see, point of privilege. I would really like to see you all actually honor the spirit of debate and stop, first of all, trying to prematurely cut folks off and not actually responding to what's being said. It's very tacky.
Ms. McKinney, did you have something to add?
Um, I'm sorry. That was a point of privilege that I expected a response to.
Sure. What would you like a response to, Ms. Waters?
Yes, I'd like you to answer the question that Carol asked. It wasn't an, you claimed it's a straw man argument. She didn't make an argument. She asked you a direct question. Would you answer it, please?
When we are debating a bylaw, um, update, I'm not going to talk about my personal beliefs or preferences because they're not important to the topic at hand. Ms. McKinney, did you have something to add?
So I.
I'm sorry, but that, but you did not answer the question. She asked why making this change at this moment is important to you. She didn't ask you about your personal belief. Why is this change in this moment important to you?
Go ahead, Ms. McKinney.
Um, I'm sorry, but you still didn't answer the question. And I would like you to stop being disrespectful and trying to advance or step around the questions that we're answering. That we're asking, excuse me.
Please stay to order. Mrs. McKinney has the floor.
Uh, Ms. Parliamentarian, am I out of order? I, I asked, I inserted a point of privilege. I asked for my question to be answered and it has been answered. Am I out of order? If I am, I'll kindly get back in, but I just want to know if I am or not.
This is rather unusual. So it would be nice if he were to answer, but I don't think he wants to answer.
And he can say that too. I'm fine with that answer. Directness is always preferred over, you know, sidestepping.
So do you want to say anything more, Mr. Kelly?
I've already answered the question and Ms. McKinney has the floor at this point.
No, you haven't answered the question. Why is this important? That I'll take off to you. Why is this important right now to consider these bylaws?
Why is it so important that we don't?
Well, if you can't answer why it's important to consider these, then all these changes that you've suggested are not relevant.
It's in the Health Advisory Committee bylaws that their bylaws themselves get reviewed and updated periodically. We're doing that. You are doing this. We, this is a group discussion that you've taken part in. Ms. McKinney, you have the floor.
Sure. And, and I understand, um, we have a policy liaison, so policy changes originate there. If we would rather have a policy committee, then we need to change our policy.
Point of information, in April, we actually voted to, um, create a policy committee. Where are we at with that? Where are we at with that?
It was dissolved.
Yeah.
Dissolved by whom?
When the policy, so that if you will recall, when the policy liaison was censured, we, um, uh, I appointed, um, Mr. Grabowski and Ms. Waters as the ad hoc policy committee. And an ad hoc committee only serves until its use is dissolved. And so once Mr. Kelly was reappointed as policy liaison, the policy ad hoc committee was dissolved, just like when we had the, um, the ad hoc committee to look for a search firm or different things. It's a temporary, um, committee.
But when do you know it's dissolved? We didn't know it was dissolved.
So as if we have, uh, reached where we needed to afford to be dissolved yet, as we can see what's going on right now. Who said it was dissolved?
Well, if the statement was not made, um, it was certainly understood that we did not need a policy ad hoc committee once the policy liaison.
We can't go by implication. That's how we got in trouble with the five eighteen motion. It has to be specific and we have to know when, where, and why. That's why we're in trouble right now.
So we, we
Can I?
Are off topic here.
Can I add, um, to that, that point? I'm not sure that it's off topic because we're talking about how we should move forward. And I, I wanted to point out that, that, that committee was actually formed prior to the censorship. It was actually formed in response to board members feeling that the policy liaison was unilaterally making decisions. Um, if you go back, it, it was, it, it was formed prior to the censorship because our first step was actually to, the first, in the first conversation, we didn't actually take any action. It wasn't until some other events occurred later. So I'm also just wondering, and I'm not volunteering to serve on the committee. I truly do not desire to. Um, but in terms of the reason for it, my question is whether that one was dissolved or not, was the intent of it fulfilled? And does the intent or does the need still remain? And it sounds like, at least from some of us, there is a need to get some additional thought into these recommendation conversations.
Yes. And Ms. Waters, you're absolutely correct. The ad hoc committee was not put together, was not created to serve as the policy liaison. The ad hoc committee was formed to come up with the plan on how this board would move forward, um, with policy. And that did not happen. We went right back to the same thing.
Okay. I, I'd like to bring us back to focus. We're, we're actually way off topic right now. I know you guys want to discuss this, but perhaps we can discuss this, um, with a different agenda item because the policy liaison issue isn't on the agenda tonight. So I'd like to take us back to the bylaws. That is what the topic is supposed to be right now. So, Mr. Kelly, are you ready for the question?
So if, that, we're talking about the bylaws. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We've yet to have a motion made on the bylaws.
Okay. Um, do you want to make a motion?
Yes. I moved, we advanced the Health Advisory Committee bylaws to the Board of Trustees' November thirteenth meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Kelly, seconded by Ms. Bailey. I'm calling for the question.
Can I get a discussion?
I'm sorry. We have to vote to shut down debate.
Discussion, um, so I just want to get back to this, Dr. Temple's question about the bylaws change. Why is it important to change the bylaws now?
Anything else, sir?
No, that's a question with a question mark behind it.
Any other input?
Okay, there's nothing new. We're going to call for the question.
Yes, please.
So when we talk about transparency, these are the things that we're talking about. You can't say that you want transparency without giving the trans.
This is why we're in trouble because we do not have honest opinions here.
Angle time.
I vote nay.
Dr. Temple, are you logged into Board Docs or do you want to voice vote?
Um, I was, I voted nay.
Okay. Okay. So the motion does not pass.
Okay. So we will move on to item six A, other business. Mr. Redenbach is going to come forward to give us a presentation.
Good evening. This action is asking for approval on the attached resolution related to the Charleston Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Charleston County Government, uh, coordinates, uh, and maintains the regional hazard mitigation plan for our county along with input from over thirty, uh, local jurisdictions and entities. This is a plan that, uh, speaks to the potential hazards that our area could face and creates action items for us to mitigate the risk associated with those, with those vulnerabilities such as, uh, natural disasters like hurricanes and tornadoes. Uh, every five years, uh, we're required as a jurisdiction to formally adopt this plan, which is then submitted to the state and to FEMA. Uh, having this plan in place makes us eligible for non-emergency, uh, disaster-related assistance, uh, such as mitigation money. An example of, uh, uh, an area that's been used in the past is to, uh, install generator hookups at schools used as, as hurricane shelters as an example. Uh, so again, this is, uh, a plan we bring forward every five years for formal approval. And then every year, we provide a written update, uh, of any changes that occur in the plan, uh, during that year. Somebody to your questions?
Um, I'll start with, um, actually, I'll start with, um, Ms. Waters. Do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. Redenbach.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Temple?
No questions.
Mr. Calhoun?
No questions.
Ms. Bailey? Ms. McKinney? Ms. Roberson? Mr. Kelly? Mr. Grabowski? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
And then we will move on to item six B.
It's an action.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I saw move.
Go ahead and make the motion, Mr. Calhoun.
I move to advance in November thirteenth board meeting for consideration to approve the attached resolution related to the for a public information plan.
A second?
Second.
I vote yay.
And the motion passes. So item six B determined the agenda, can, um, consent agenda. I believe we just have this one. Closing items, upcoming meetings, um, it's, it's worded, it's, uh, wrong here on, um, our next meeting is Audit and Finance Committee tomorrow, uh, two? No? Audit Finance Committee meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah. The two o'clock, right? And then we have, um, it says on our background here in November the eleventh, but it's actually November the thirteenth, our regular board meeting at five fifteen. Then, uh, December the fifth, we also have a Audit and Finance Committee meeting again at two. And December the eleventh will be a combined meeting of Committee of the Whole and the regular board meeting. And motion to adjourn.